Welcome to the third hearing of the committee's inquiry into the beneficial and productive post-mining land use. I acknowledge the Wanarua people, the traditional custodians on the land on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people that are joining us here today in the room and online. My name is Emily Savile and I'm the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence that they give today, however, it does not apply to remarks witnesses may make outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses therefore to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome and thank you for making time to give evidence to the inquiry today. Could I ask each of you, starting on my left, to state your name, position, title and swear either the oath or the affirmation, please?
Yes, no problem at all. Steve Reynolds, Mayor of Muswellbrook Shire Council. I take the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Derek Finnegan, General Manager, Muswellbrook Shire Council. I'll take the affirmation, please. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Shaila Welshman, Director of Community Economy, Muswellbrook Shire Council. I'll take the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hello, I'm Sharon Pope, the Director of Environment and Planning, Muswellbrook Shire Council. I too will take the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would any of you like to start by making an opening statement?
Yeah, I would. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair and to you, to Deputy Chair and the panel for coming along, especially particularly here in Muswellbrook. As you know, this is the engine room for the state when it comes to coal mining and one of the very most impacted when it comes to the land reuse and all things coal mining. So, thank you very much for coming along and we really do appreciate you having the hearing here.
I also would like to make a statement on behalf of council. So, I refer to council's submission dated the 25th of June and advise that there has been no changes to council's feedback and comments since that date. Since coal mining began in Muswellbrook in 1907 and we subsequently had coal-fired power stations established in the area, there has been significant impact on Muswellbrook Shire, which has been both positive and negative. Positive impacts, economic growth and infrastructure development. Negative have been some health issues, environmental concerns and social disruption. The impact of closures will be significant for the regional economy and well-being of communities and goes beyond those directly employed by the closing mines in Muswellbrook Shire. Surveys undertaken by council indicate that the residents of Muswellbrook Shire are very concerned about future employment opportunities and the level of uncertainty that they face. There is agreement that Muswellbrook Shire is well-placed to accommodate new industry and housing growth with an adaptable, skilled and hard-working labour force present, locational advantages based on key road and rail networks, access to a port and airport, energy distribution infrastructure and proximity to Newcastle and Sydney, large consolidated land holdings. Without coordinated leadership and strong community engagement to commence the diversification of our economy prior to closure of the mines, there is concern that we're running out of time to capitalise on these opportunities. What do we need? The older mine approvals only require that mine sites be returned to the same condition and land use present before mining began. This does not consider that the regional economy, technology, the environment and society has changed over the past 20 to 30 years. We need outcomes that are nature-positive and improve natural capital, that replace the number of mining jobs with new skilled jobs and create a place where people want to live and visit. And we need to commence action to drive these outcomes prior to the closure of the mines. We ideally need an authority or agency that has primary responsibility and significant authority to drive action, authority to bring together the various government agencies that are involved in mining, land use planning, heritage and environment for coordination of effort. And the actions required: one, a review of legislation, regulations and policies that make new uses on mine sites or the bufferland surrounding mine sites difficult to approve; two, a review of mine sites and their infrastructure to determine those that are well-located for future employment or urban land uses; areas on mine sites that are vital for nature-positive outcomes; areas that may be suited for renewable energy, recreation, intensive or extensive farming; three, a mechanism to allow a flexible approach to mine site rehabilitation that doesn't expose the general community and community funds to moderate or high levels of risk if new uses are slow to be found; four, a governance framework for any funding that is offered by mining companies as compensation for the economic and social impacts of mine closure; five, tools to require mine owners to engage in transition and post-mining land use planning that considers and achieves identified contemporary economic, social and environmental targets; six, community engagement early to establish support for new uses and reduce the sense of uncertainty that will otherwise impact on other social and investment decisions; seven, marketing and promotion of the opportunities available in the region; and eight, financial support for key infrastructure delivery that may benefit more than one site and encourage that diversification of the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any further opening statements? No? Okay, thank you. We'll now move to questions, looking to my colleagues if any of you would like to start.
Well, I'm happy to.
Go for it.
Thank you. Obviously, the workforce that's currently engaged in coal mining is probably the heart of any Shire and LGA in this area. Could you provide some details about how you see that transition for mining workers at the moment that are looking to, I guess, stay in the area? What you'd hope to see in relation to the rehabilitation of those lands, utilising those workers as well? And how do you see council's role in making sure that that workforce is engaged in that aspect of the rehabilitation?
Thank you, Mr Feng. Our workforce in Muswellbrook is really quite young, so our median age is 37. Most of those people are living here, they've got another 20 or so years left in their working career. The mines and the power stations do a really great job of working, looking after their existing workforces, about transitioning to other employment opportunities, re-skilling or redundancies through the, you know, the closure process. What our exposure, our concern as council is, is the mums and dads, the community that live here, that, you know, their kids go to school here, they're part of our sporting clubs, and about how these businesses who rely on mining as an industry will be able to transition to other industries. They need to see now that there are other industries moving into the region and what are those opportunities for our local businesses. Just raw figures, if we lost those mining jobs out of our economy tomorrow, it has a flow-on impact of 0.82 other jobs within the supply chain, which has a massive impact on our, and our whole community. So, it's a great concern and something that council's really focused on trying to support, those existing family-owned businesses in the region to be able to diversify beyond mining.
So, in that aspect, I guess, is it fair to say that ultimately council would prefer that those sites that were used for mining previously would then be returned to a, I guess, a working state as opposed to just being returned to, I guess, natural landscape or, you know, pastoral use? That you want to try and use the facilities that are at the site, you want to try and use the natural advantages that a mining site might have to try and create further economic opportunity for the LGA?
Absolutely. And it's also not just an opportunity for the states, for the whole region and, sorry, for the Shire, it's an opportunity for the state and the whole of the Hunter as well. We've got that existing infrastructure, we should be able to leverage it to be able to attract other industries into the region and at least be able to replace those existing mining jobs with new jobs in different industries. We're talking about really large-scale parcels of land, 16,000 hectares is BHP, it will be able to accommodate a whole range of new uses in the region. Nonetheless, there's obviously industrial uses and being able to replace those mining jobs.
Mayor? Under the current consents, they're required to return the lands, remediate them back to what they were, and that's just not practical for us moving forward in the Shire. There's so much infrastructure that can leverage us jobs for the future and enable the rail link that's there, the current roadways and office buildings to be reused and purposed for industries, and we need that to be really monitored and looked at. So, as, we're not removing things that could potentially put back, not sterilising the ground, so as there is no future impact, no future employment opportunities. At the moment, as you know, they're required to put grass and trees back. We need to really look at the alternatives to stimulate this economy because it's going to have a massive impact on the New South Wales budget.
Yeah. So, I guess that, you know, where there is these existing approvals that effectively return the sticks and the grass to, you know, the landscape, that's going to have a detrimental economic impact on, I guess, this area because that productive land use has not only, not only you're seeing those high-paying coal mining jobs disappear, but it's also then, I guess, a loss of that productivity that that site could also have had. If that was to occur, if it was, I guess, returned to, you know, the environmental view where you have just grass and trees put back there, what impact do you think that would have for the next generation of residents in this council area?
For our community, it would be very devastating. It's, our Shire is completely, 47% of our area is national parks out to the west and also when you take into consideration the mining land that encompasses, and we're not talking about the bufferland or post-mining, we're talking about the land that they currently acquired when they applied for their consent. It ties up around the peripheral of this town and to sterilise that leaves us no direction to go except to, if was the potential to do something on the AGL site, to the south. So, it's not a practical outcome for us to go back to those old methods. We move forward with technology and make the best opportunities for our future. It scares me to think that that would be something we'd look to do.
So, it must be quite exciting then, I guess, that you've got a proposal like the Pumped Hydro. We were out at Muswellbrook Coal, you know, and you've effectively got the reservoir pre-built at the bottom, you know, all you have, there's going to be very little impact environmentally by building the upper reservoir, and what you're going to see is actually, I guess, a huge economic boost to the area with those jobs, with the ongoing maintenance and the work that occurs there. That's really what this local government area needs, isn't it? Needs that investment.
Renewable energy jobs are going to be great and we're starting to see a lot of those come through, but we need really large employers as well. We need a diversity of economic activity, so not just from renewable energy, but what does that supply chain look like? What are the components that need to go in? How can we position ourselves as a region to help power whatever that future economy might look like?
But, Mr Feng, just as our planning director said, it's opportunity. Muswellbrook's got plenty of opportunity to have great outcomes and it is not a like-for-like job, we are aware of that when it comes to mining, but it's the opportunities that are presented if we are to capitalise on this at the moment.
My last question, I guess, is what would be your message to people that would say, you know, we don't want to see that Pumped Hydro, I guess, project built because, you know, it might impact on a biodiversity issue?
I would say these sites are so large that you can have both. Some parts of the sites will be suitable for employment opportunities, other parts of the site actually could contribute to an improvement in our biodiversity, particularly I'm looking at the Hunter River and how poor the quality of that river is, the vegetation alongside that river has been removed by previous forestry and agricultural uses, which is partly why we don't want to return to what it was. We actually want to improve it and make it better. So, I think you can actually have it all.
I might ask now off the back of one of Mr Feng's questions, talking about the infrastructure that's left in place, and Ms Pope, you mentioned in your opening statement about a review of the infrastructure that exists at the moment. We know this is one of the actions of the Hunter Regional Plan 2041, that's Action 1.1, and I asked about that action earlier in the hearings and was quite concerned to hear that that work had not been undertaken. What is council doing in that space in the absence of any other work being underway?
At this point in time, we've been engaging with government agencies to try to push that body of work. We've been working with Singleton Council and have made a number of presentations to different agencies to highlight the importance of that body of work. No two mine sites are the same and no two are located in the same proximity to an urban area, so the infrastructure might be useful in one location for jobs and in another location the best thing might be to actually remove that infrastructure, but we really don't have a good understanding of that. We don't have a good understanding of the sequence of closure of the mine sites. And so, that makes it very hard for people to consider the investment needed for infrastructure, to promote sites to new users, maybe to pull them up from Sydney to say we've got sites where they could do development. Yes, so we've mainly been advocating for this work to occur. We have done an employment land strategy, again, the four upper Hunter councils joined together to do an employment land strategy, which we finalised this year, and it did highlight the importance of a lot of these mine sites for our future employment land.
I think it's also a matter of confidence for the, you know, end users to be able to know that if they go through a process that, you know, that infrastructure is going to be there for them to be able to use, to be able to attract them to the region. The mines, AGL, they're not developers, they are, you know, mining and energy companies. There is a bit of a missing piece between, like, coordination between, yes, we want to have a better economic outcome, but how do we actually make that happen? We've, yes, we've got this amazing infrastructure there, but there is 16 different departments within the state government that have a touch point into, you know, facilitating a better outcome for the community. So, it's a really important coordination piece between, we want to achieve an outcome, but how do we now go about using this infrastructure and using our workforce capability to get a better outcome than what's currently planned?
And who would do that coordination ideally?
Well, with, ideally, and other examples that we have looked at, you know, the state government definitely takes a really strong lead role in that coordination, but you need the councils buy into that, you need that connection with local communities to be able to have a really good understanding of what those issues are on the ground and what's needed in these local communities. As Sharon said, you know, Muswellbrook is different to Singleton, we have a different offering to what is down the road, but we will act as a regional supply chain and leverage off the economic opportunities, you know, throughout the whole of the Hunter.
And just for clarification, you referenced the 16 different government departments that have touch points. Is that an exaggeration or is that an actual figure of the number of government departments you may have to deal with?
No, that is an actual figure of the number of government departments that have some kind of impact or influence over the current mining land, environmental planning, economic development, you know, investment in New South Wales, a whole range of different infrastructure, yeah, a whole range of different departments. But at the moment, there is no sort of coordinating body or direction from the state government perspective to be able to drive a better outcome than what's currently planned.
Thank you.
And if I could, Madam Chair?
Please, yeah.
As Shaila said, we do have profound comparative advantage in our Shire and the region, and I think we would advocate strongly for early engagement with our community. I don't think it should be underestimated how our community identifies itself, and the mining legacy is very strong and very positive for our community, and we have a highly skilled workforce, and I know council would engage as much as we possibly can to assist the development of that workforce to re-skill, re-train for any economic opportunities that arise through this process.
You mentioned that in your opening statement about the community engagement piece and surveys that you've done, you know, setting aside what you've just said, Derek, I wonder if you can just expand on what that has surfaced for you as a council in informing what it is that the community wants for this region moving forward?
Yeah, it's, the community, as Derek said, it identifies really strongly with mining. We're five generations of mining communities, you know, there is that, it is part of our culture and fabric of who we are as a community, which is really important, and I think it's, you know, it's the confidence for them to be able to see that there is opportunities for their children and for their families to be able to stay in the region that they're part of. When we've done these surveys, they are concerned that these jobs are going to start to change, and I don't think it was really a reality for the community until, you know, we had the closure of Muswellbrook Coal and Liddell Power Station next year. So, the sentiment is definitely starting to, you know, starting to change. And whilst mining will be here for a long period of time, we need to start to act now to, you know, give that certainty and security to families that there are going to be other opportunities for their children. Council has invested into a number of programmes to help our community to start to diversify. We're running a programme for the STEM, in our STEM lab and our STEM innovation programme to try and help our youth and our future workforce to be able to aspire to be whatever they want to be and be able to do it still here in the region. You know, 65% of the jobs aren't going to exist in, that exist now aren't going to exist, so giving them those soft skills around problem-solving and teamwork and communication so that they can look at, you know, new opportunities. The mines themselves are starting to diversify into, you know, more focus on electrical engineering and other, you know, types of skills that they haven't brought into their workforces previously. So, it's really good to sort of see that starting to transition as well. And then we've also got a programme through the Melt Advanced Manufacturing Centre that we've got in our Donald Horn Building, which is a free facility for our businesses that I spoke to before, to be able to come in and look at how they diversify, you know, their product offering, look at new markets and look at new opportunities. So, council, I think, has made some significant progress in trying to help our community, both of our existing workforce and our future workforce, to try and transition and to address those, you know, future opportunities as they come up, so.
And just, like I know, the confidence, having been a long-time local and lived here all my life, we need to have the confidence for the people here. We know that mining is going to be here for a long time, but those family jobs, we've seen what happens when a mine shuts and the impact that it has on the service companies and the mum and dad businesses that actually are not directly employed by the mining industry. They need that diversification right here, right now. We don't have four years to wait, we need to get the action happening now, and the community will move along with it. It will be something that is just taken in a stride. We've had, you know, the closure of Liddell, a lot of media around it, but our community in the way that it was handled was very strategic and there was no negative reaction from that. But I'd just say we need to really have that diversification now for the confidence moving forward.
And I'll just add to that, sorry, that the community is really open to any industry and employment opportunities. They're really supportive of, you know, any types of industry coming into the area. Heavy industry, we've had some discussions around nuclear as well, and it's been quite interesting just to sort of see, you know, the positivity around, you know, its jobs, it's about security and future for, you know, for our community.
Nuclear is a very positive industry, so, you know, I can understand the, I can understand the excitement in the community about nuclear potentially coming here.
Take that as a comment, Mr Feng, yeah. How are community opinions currently considered in the post-mining land use approval process, especially when there is conflict between community desires, economically beneficial uses and the proposed rehabilitation plans?
I don't think we've actually completed a post-mining land use strategy for any of the sites to be able to say what has worked well and what hasn't worked well. We're very much at the starting point. We really haven't had a lot of engagement with community groups in developing post-mining land use strategies for mine sites. There's been a lot of communication between the miner owners, in the case of BHP's Mount Arthur site and the Muswellbrook Coal site, between council, the mine owners, the resources regulator staff and Department of Planning staff, and to some degree Transport for New South Wales staff. We've not had a plan finalised. We've not had a plan that we've been able to go out to the community and actually engage them and say, is this the right direction? Is this incorporating the things you would expect? So, yes, it's too soon in the process to actually know how the community feels we've progressed with post-mining planning. The current planning approvals, some of the mines, their approvals are 30 years old. They don't even have conditions that talk about post-mining planning. It's all about rehabilitation. So, there's only been opportunities when we've had modifications to current mines. We've been able to get new conditions inserted into approvals that even require mines to start thinking about the closures five years before the closure is planned, and that they should be engaging with the chambers of commerce, with traditional landowners, with the farming community, with council to come up with these master plans for these sites.
The community is very well aware too that we are largely the export market. The community realises that there's coal-fired power stations popping up across the globe and that's going to be continually to need to be done, and as you know, New South Wales has some of the highest quality coal, so that's going to be around for a long time. It's just, as you said, the community sentiment is we need that test product to be able to show them.
Thank you all for coming and giving your time today. I'm just curious, and I think, Ms Pope, you gave evidence towards this point. Is it your suggestion that really what we need at the moment on part of the state government is a kind of one-stop shop, like a commission for post-mining land use, a place where councils, company, mining corporations can all be filtering through and that is actually your interface so that every time you are looking for specific detail, the audit of what's happening, or you've got ideas or needs, rather than having to go to the potentially one of 16, and let's face it, you would go to four before you got the right one, that you would have this one place and all the work you need happens behind that place? Is that something that is in your mind's eye?
There is a number of different ways that you could deliver this. I think we don't want to tie the opportunity up in red tape either, so it's a really fine balance about trying to, you know, get an outcome and what's the best governance framework and funding model to be able to do that. From our point of view, I think from council, we would like to have some certainty and some security about there is someone in government responsible for delivering an outcome for our community, and then the mechanism whether or not that's authority, an authority, a separate entity or, you know, some kind of, you know, department within the state government to be able to deliver the outcome. We would be happy to work with the state government, you know, in the finalisation and the development of what that model is, and obviously that is also part of the Jobs and Investment Authority which is being proposed. We just want to make sure that we have got good representation from our community and that we as a community are able to drive. that we, as a community, are able to drive what our outcomes are.
And so, yeah, so with the jobs and, what do we call it?
Jobs and investment.
Future jobs investment. Are you, at this point, I know it's very early, but at this point, are you thinking that, yes, that's the mechanism? Or is that part of a mechanism? I'm sort of getting, because how does that then reconcile and deal with your inquiries about that fantastic vision you have about being nature positive as well? Where if we're just, if we're literally over here focusing on jobs and future, then we're missing the nature positive piece and we're missing, you know, so it's almost like that is a fundamental part of it, but we're still going to need this piece, which is the, I don't know for want of a better term, the commission that drives. And it has to be, if it is in fact that kind of governance model, it has to be the enabler. It can't be the gatekeeper, prohibit, it's got to be the open gate is kind of where you're, I think. And is your, that I can hear your slight reluctance around another thing because we are worried about a red tape kind of, or a closed door or a hard-to-get-through gate? That's the biggest fear if we were to create something that was designed to facilitate this really important next step.
And, you know, we've got mining in place here until, you know, 2040, 2048 currently. It's not a short-term thing. This is something that is going to need longevity for a really long period of time to ensure that, you know, the economic stability, the growth and resilience of not just our community, but the whole of the Hunter over a really long period of time. So, you know, having some, something in place that has some longevity is really important as well.
Most, it's very important that if we do get something happening, it's typically, as we are more impacted at a condensed level compared to Singleton, that there is some agency, and I understand the reluctance, but that is on the ground here, that is dealing with the council at that level and feeding back through. At the moment, our staff have too many doors to knock on to get things to happen. Taking into consideration the environment and everything, yes, I see where you're coming from, but yeah, that'd be a start because we don't have the time.
And can I just ask, in terms of your capacity as councils planners, do you feel that you have good tools to really see and understand and comprehend the current lay of the land in terms of all of the mining projects and supposed final picture? And the potential within what's there now and the final picture? And what that some of those companies are currently considering? Have you got a kind of lens on all those moving parts?
To a degree, we do. What we don't have is resources.
Yeah.
We're relatively small councils. And the fact that we host all these mines and power stations and now renewable energy, it's quite a big financial impact on our ratepayers to employ high-calibre staff and a number of staff that you need, the engineers, the planners, environmental specialists. It wouldn't be something that a regional council would normally have to do. So it's quite a struggle to actually fund the resources we need to do this on our own.
Whilst also trying to balance the development needs of the community as well.
Yeah.
That's right.
Has there been any consideration about approaching some of the mining companies about having a brokered fund for your capacity building on staff? And, you know, no, obviously there would have to be strong governance and so not a direct second or paid direct, but more brokered a fund specific for your capacity to navigate these next two decades?
We have voluntary planning agreements with the mines. A part of that goes towards funding some of the resources that we need to be able to deal with, you know, with the approvals, with the impacts, with the whole range of things that we want to deliver over a long period of time. I think the issue also for council as mining land transitions back to, you know, a different zoning, it definitely has a financial impact on our organization. But also for our local, you know, sporting groups, events, you know, the mines sponsor and support a whole range of community groups and events and activities within our community. And that financial support will change over, change over time as well. So we need, we're very conscious of trying to leverage the, you know, that financial capacity that we have right now to be able to help to set us up for the future and then also be able to provide those resources that we need to be able to put those foundational programs or those interventions in place which are going to, you know, tip the needle and make a big difference to our community's future.
The VPA money is more, you know, there is categories in there where we do have offset for minuscule amounts of money for staff. You know, I don't speak on behalf of all mines, but a lot of them like to see something with it they can put their name onto for perpetual use. I thoroughly agree that there needs to be something for council staff moving forward, a financial model that they attribute to so as we can. In our Shire specifically, given the, you know, even the renewables that are coming online, we deal with Energy Co, to have this one fund to allow the, we're competing with mining wages at a council level. And our budget is not that of Western Sydney, it is rural. And our neighbours, Upper Hunter, we were previously on the same level as them, and our staff are continuously working their butts off for a lot more work than what they should be. So yeah, I believe that you are correct. The mechanism needs to be put in place so it's structured, so some of that funding can be used, to be used for our staff, or not some, more than what is currently there.
Yeah, go on, sorry.
Council's also a bit of a funnel for all of these projects that are happening in the region. They either need to transfer through Mussebrook to transport their goods or, you know, renewable end, like wind farm blades or whatever the case may be. So we do see the whole breadth of projects that are happening within the region because they need to talk to us, they need to get that community engagement as well. So we are a really good sounding board for all of those projects and opportunities that are happening. And we constantly play that, you know, connection. Have you spoken to this department that's spoken to us next week? Or have you spoken to this particular company which is setting up a battery? So we play that facilitation role within the Shire already.
And I've just got two more questions. One is, in terms of the, it sounds like you're doing some really good work in terms of the workforce and the skilling, reskilling, retraining. Is there, is there work that the state should be doing in terms of TAFE? Or is there, is there more that you can see that is required and that the state government could be doing now before and are the companies, is there a role for these mining companies to be investing in this as well? And is that happening? Is there visibility around that? Just curious to know, because I do hear, you know, the companies talk about looking after the workforce and, but to date, to be quite frank, I'm seeing some signs of it, but nothing really translatable yet into something very tangible is what I, I haven't seen that yet, that there could be.
And what are we training people for?
Precisely. And we're, yeah, yeah. So yeah, I'd love to know your views on that.
So yeah, we have, we have a University of Newcastle campus here. We're working really strongly with them to provide open pathways, open universities, open pathways programs here within Mussebrook. Our, most of our workers or people in mines, they're also in on shift work. So, you know, being able to provide those courses for those staff which are on the alternate rosters. So working really closely with the industry to be able to, you know, link existing staff up with those opportunities. TAFE is obviously going through a restructure and we're working, we've started those conversations with them about what types of courses we want delivered here in Mussebrook to be able to help, help the community to be able to transition. There is, we're sort of, we are in this little bit of a sort of holding pattern, whereas we haven't attracted that sort of, that keystone industry here to replace mining. So we know we need electricians, we know we need a whole range of different, you know, skills and experience, but we're not exactly sure what those, what we're retraining people for at this point in time. TAFE will be a key partner with us. We've got a round table between themselves and the Upper Hunter, sorry, and the University of Newcastle as well. I think we want to be able to provide our youth with opportunities to learn, be educated here within Mussebrook. It is a, it's a terrible public transport option for them to go to Newcastle and other locations to get training, which will see most of our youth looking at alternative places to be educated.
So we have a vision as Mussebrook of becoming the educational hub for the area. As Shaila has touched on, that we do have the university, the TAFE campuses, but it's offering the courses that, you know, not just your hairdressing courses that typically are here and being able to be done, it's a variety. Our community, it is, our STEM education results in the past have shown that we're below the state average and it is pretty poor. So we've taken those steps so as we can educate our children and have them being able to, hopefully, further their education here in our community and also progress through to a job in our community. For that, the funding needs to be there. I don't see that currently it will work with connected learning centers and the like. It has to be face-to-face on the ground here in our community.
And if we can unlock the mining land to attract future industry here, we can position ourselves as a key center for, you know, renewable energy or for economic transition. But I really do think we have the opportunity in Mussebrook and in the Hunter to power whatever that future economy might be.
And are you, do you feel there's enough awareness or information around potential future carbon markets in terms of the nature positive and the natural capital and that army of workforce that would be required around that? Is that something that you're looking at or focused on?
Yeah, it's definitely part of our key industry mix and what we want to try and attract there. Obviously, there is a lot of finance and investments sort of tied up waiting to be placed into these types of activities. And the mine sites definitely would provide a good opportunity for some of those carbon offset industries or new industries, even behind the grid electricity opportunities for new industries that might want to manufacture here that might be, you know, heavy users of energy. So we do have all of those opportunities where we could position ourselves as a, you know, a quite a carbon neutral location because of our existing infrastructure and opportunities that we have here.
Especially our proximity to the grid for the electricity. And particularly, I'll come back to that word that I've used, education. They will with the education, but the funding at the moment is poor for our community when it comes to the amount of royalties that leave this area. So to reinvest back in it would be, especially from a staffing level and for the community, we need that, we need that funding now.
So the royalties for regions program, I guess is something that you'd be...
Sorry, I can't.
Oh, sorry, the royalties for regions program is something you'd be strongly supportive of?
Yeah, that, even that isn't quite enough, Mr Feng. It's, it was great that it was directly to the council rather than competing with outside other companies that are eligible in the current formation. It was great that it was coming directly back to the council, but more is required, especially when we've seen the largest amount of coal royalties, coal prices. The model, yes, could have been tweaked, but the percentage, it wasn't enough.
And I think we need more engagement with the community generally. There's clearly things happening, a lot of research and development happening with the universities and businesses getting research grants. But I think in the main, the community's unaware of what's going on and unaware of the potential future of Mussebrook, the Upper Hunter. And there is a really strong need for that engagement piece to occur so that people are part of that journey.
And I had one last one. I'm just curious in your submission about the defence munitions component. It's, I'm just curious, like, you know, is there, is there actual buy-in around that? Is that really a vision for your local area or is that just something that was kind of, it's in there, it's in the mix?
We have a fairly significant federal facility at Denman.
Yeah.
And obviously we have the Singleton Army Base just down the road and we have the RAF at Tomgo. So there's, there's a presence in this region that could be built on.
But I think my question is, yeah, sure, but is that something, like, do you, you know, is that something you hold as a vision to be a kind of manufacturer of war and defence? You know, or is that just something and you'd rather something a bit more kind of proactive or positive for the community? I'm just curious, really.
It's about leveraging what we're already, what we already have and our existing competencies. It's something that, you know, is already here that could potentially be built on. You know, space as well, there's a whole, you know, intensive agriculture, you know, clean tech and manufacturing, there's a whole range of industries which we have the land to be able to accommodate. So at this point in time, you know, until we sort of, you know, set our sites in a particular direction, we are definitely open to all of these opportunities which will replace the jobs that are currently in mining.
We're open for business, we just need less red tape.
Yeah. I did, yeah, just that idea of, you know, it's, it is at that pivot opportunity now for you guys in your local area to really define what you want to be for the next 30, 40, 50 years compared to what we, you know, have been for the last...
Arms manufacturer, sounds good.
Thanks, Wes. So yeah, that one was more just curiosity really in that sense.
And it could be a component of, you know, that goes into the defence industry. It could just be a little widget that, you know, is in every, you know, plane or aircraft that, you know, flies out of Williamtown or, you know, across the fleet. So it's not necessarily, you know, the whole industry, it could just be a supply chain.
And sorry, my very last point was, you mentioned, yeah, yeah. We get three lasts and then we get run out by the chair. The very last one was, you mentioned, I can't remember whom, but what you mentioned about, you know, the vision of a, you know, a rich cultural relationship with traditional custodians and First Nations communities. What does that look like for you and what work is happening and where is that work happening in terms of the community?
I can give it some record background. Thanks very much for the question. It's at the core of everything we do. We have a very strong relationship with the local land council and the community. We do, we're lucky to have quite a high indigenous population in Mussebrook, I think it's 11.8%. All of our planning and all of our projects do include consultation. And it's very important to us that we have a unique ability here to enhance that engagement and to benefit from that engagement with our local community. It's really important to us.
We have councillors that are actually from indigenous heritage as well that provide a good input. And we have a separate subcommittee as well for indigenous inclusion that has a representation from around the community. And there's been some great documentation recently provided by some of the staff in how we will incorporate our indigenous heritage moving forward because we're proud of our power and energy situation and what we've provided in our background, but also our indigenous and cultural side of things here in Mussebrook.
Our indigenous population has a lot to offer us in understanding the past before Europeans settled the valley, to understand, you know, the songlines, to know what the landscape was like, what animals and plants were in the landscape before Europeans settled in the valley is quite vital to know what we should be replacing, you know, what we should be planting and where and how we manage that land. So we've actually been helping to fund some cultural burn initiatives in the Shire, which helps people learn those skills, but hopefully to treat the land better as well.
That engagement has to be a core aspect of planning for the future. It's a very important point that Sharon made.
Thank you, thank you so much for making time to give evidence to the inquiry today. Our committee secretary will be in touch with you if there are any supplementary questions that the committee members have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to our next witnesses. Thank you for making time to give evidence to the inquiry today. If I could ask each of you, starting on my left, to state your name, position, title, and swear either the oath or the affirmation, please.
Yes, thank you. My name's Mary Anne Crawford, I'm the manager of Development and Environmental Services at Singleton Council. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Hi, I'm Melinda Curtis, I'm the executive manager at Singleton Council. I'll be saying the oath today. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making an opening statement?
Yes, I will, thank you. We appreciate having the opportunity to present to you today. The Singleton Local Government area comprises over 92,000 hectares of coal mining lease and exploration land, making it one of the largest mining areas in New South Wales. The area of land attributable to mining-related activities accounts for almost 40% of the total area of available land in our LGA, excluding national parks and state conservation areas. Singleton is the third largest economy in Australia's largest regional economy, the Hunter. Singleton's economy contributes over $13 billion to the state of New South Wales and employs over 18,400 people, with over 50% travelling into the LGA for work every day from other parts of the Hunter, including the lower Hunter. As such, any reforms related to how land will be used, post-mining is important to the future economy of not only the Hunter region, but also the state of New South Wales. Despite the significance to New South Wales of mining land in our LGA, there has been no state mandated approach to strategic land use planning for how mining land will be used now and into the future. Ever since mining was recognised as state significant development, the Strategic Land Use Planning Framework set out in the EPNA Act under Part III has been eroded and pigeonholed into the Development Assessment Framework under Part IV of the EPNA Act. This limits land use planning to a case-by-case approach at the DA stage of development to identify final land uses on individual mine sites. Singleton Council has invested time and resources into evaluating the impact of the position on our community. We have identified that without undertaking this strategic planning, which consists of looking at constraints and opportunities, mapping, stakeholder engagement, and planning needs, the discussion on post-mining land use will continue to be just that, a discussion. Post-mining land use is a challenge for all levels of government, the mining industry, development industry, researchers, and the community who need clear leadership and to work collaboratively together to achieve consistent, transparent, and sustainable outcomes that provide certainty and create future job opportunities.
Thank you. I'll now hand to my colleagues for questions. Did you want to start first?
I can start if you... Thank you very much for appearing today. And I'm probably going to touch on some of the same themes that I touched on previously with our previous witnesses. And I know that you were here in attendance and you would have noted that. So I guess my first question is, do you sort of agree with the sentiments of the council in that the preservation of high-paying jobs in the region is probably, I guess, paramount when you're looking at some of these transitions that the workforce will be undertaking? How important is it that governments and mining companies keep it at the forefront of their mind, the workers that are impacted by any changes in roles?
Do you want to answer this one?
Yeah, sure. So we definitely consider job retention critical. And we've made numerous statements and numerous submissions into government issues, papers, and also development assessment applications for mining companies, targeting and focusing very heavily on the need to look at post-mining land use outcomes that achieve outcomes beyond just grazing and biodiversity. That's not to say that they don't have a place, but we don't know where that place is. The critical thing for us is about diversification. We have an industry that's highly skilled for a particular purpose, but they're not necessarily skilled for multiple purposes. So by being able to create opportunities through TAFE-cent skill centres, universities, apprenticeship programmes, looking at in-regional centres, we have a TAFE skill centre ourselves in Singleton that's probably underutilised in terms of being able to create transitioning job opportunities. So apprenticeships in things like construction, housing, the renewables revolution that we're experiencing at the moment as well. And having those jobs and the opportunities for that education component to be in-region rather than having to transition outside of a region is critically important for us. What that does is it creates opportunity. We can't force people to go and do another job somewhere else, but what we can do is give them diversity in terms of what they could go and do. And I think that's critically important, to enable people to have choice, particularly when the mining operations start to wind down and other businesses start to increase. And that planning needs to happen now to enable people to get the skills that they need to be able to transition into what might be a new job for them.
In relation to, oh, sorry, did you...
Sorry, and just emphasising, you know, really that choice and opportunity of having a really a diverse selection.
In relation to the reutilisation of former mining sites, would you agree that making sure that they continue to provide economic benefit to the region is an important thing to do? That, I guess, just rehabilitating them and leaving them as bare pasture or as just a rehabilitated site is really a loss of opportunity for your LGA?
Absolutely. Council, Singleton Council absolutely agrees with that. We see mining as being a critical part of our economic growth and development for a long period to come. But there's also a transition that's occurring now. Mining is a significant industry in our LGA, but it's not a growth industry. It's not growing at the rate that it was growing 20 years ago. So we're not seeing additional growth in jobs, we're not seeing additional growth in approvals. So what that means is that we need to find ways to create better outcomes for post-mining land use, to transition to that now so that when mining operations do start to come offline, it's a smooth movement from one to the other. What we're seeing at the moment, I guess, in a post-mining land use space is that there's a lack of real strategic planning that underpins how that should happen. And that's not just at the job stage, that's at the land use stage. So there's a lot of challenges associated with the way in which post-mining land can be managed. There's a whole bunch of environmental constraints around things like contaminated land, water, surface and groundwater issues. The technical aspects of that, the industry's really good at, and they've got a lot of skills that they can contribute to not just looking at how those things can be managed now, but how they can be transitioned to a better use at some point in the future. Those are the sorts of challenges, I think, that we're starting, just as examples, that we're starting to see manifest themselves now in that jobs and land use space.
And is, I guess there's, I guess, a lot of opportunity where you've got a really large site that you might be able to diversify within that site itself. You might be able to utilise some of the existing facilities that are already there and repurpose them. You might be able to, I guess, adapt the remediation plan to provide things like activity tracks or hiking tracks or cycling tracks. That there's, I guess, where you've got a large geographically diverse site, you've potentially got many options. Is it the case that the existing, I guess, rehabilitation plans are restrictive in the way that they provide opportunity for the community with which that site has been a part of the community for such a long period of time?
Yes, we believe so. So in a legislative sense, in a legal sense, the minimum requirement from mining operator is to return a site to a safe and stable land form. That's under the Mining Act and that's a requirement at law. So safe and stable can mean a whole bunch of different things to a whole bunch of different people. I think historically what's happened is that the industry has used safe and stable as a means to be able to return the minimum. And that's not necessarily their fault, that's just the way in which the legislation is set out for them. I think as Muswellbrook said earlier, coal miners are coal miners, they're not land developers and they're not land managers. And so it's really difficult to educate and to change that perception and really look through land at a, through it a different lens. So it's not just about the coal in the ground, it's about what is that land going to be returned to at the end of that mining operation that creates an opportunity, not a cost, for industry? Because whilst ever they're holding on to that land, that's a cost to them. And somebody will need to come along at some point in the future to use that land for an alternative purpose because industry will want to either sell that land or relinquish that land back to the state government. So it's really important that that planning is done now to ensure that when that happens, there's no impost to our community, that it doesn't come at a cost to our community, and that there are actual strategic decisions that are being made now that will help industry and inform industry for what they need to prepare for when they do leave. So the sovereign risk issues that might exist around the discussion around closure planning aren't as forefront in their mind.
There is a, oh, sorry, oh, no, go on.
What is of not looking at it site by site, but looking at across the, you know, across our LGA, across the region, across the state. So that's why we, you know, we keep saying it, but emphasising that strategic piece and looking at it as early as possible.
There's a cost to the community if we don't get this right, isn't there? There's ultimately, I guess, impacts on a social, the financial, community aspect. You lose so much when you see people leaving a community and that, I guess, that lifeblood disappear. What would that mean to your community to sort of see those high-paying jobs not transition into other high-paying jobs and just simply returning that land back to sticks and grass?
Well, look, as I mentioned in our opening statement, you know, for Singleton alone, it's 18,400 jobs, so it's a significant impact. And, you know, the, obviously, the type of impacts would just, it would be hard to put into words. You know what, we talk about it being the elephant in the room. It's something that we absolutely want to ensure does not happen.
And I think further to that, we talk about post-mining land use like it's a thing over here. It's actually not, it's an integrated thing into everything that we do in our community and everything that every community in New South Wales does. It's linked to housing, it's linked to construction, it's linked to education, it's linked to health. All of those things are directly supported by mining, there's no doubt about that, but they're also directly impacted. And so if we were to lose mining from our economy and if we weren't to transition appropriately to new and diverse jobs and land uses, then that would have significant flow-on consequences for us, for all of those industries, health, education, our housing, as well as employment. So what we want to see is a transition that enables those things to be seamless. We're seeing an increase in housing demand in our LGA at the moment. We've got significant amount of population growth above and beyond that which the Department of Planning has identified for us. So we see ourselves as a growth economy, even though we have a significant industry that's declining. The challenge, and I think you've hit the nail on the head, is that that growth is not at the same economic scale as the mining industry. And I think we need to be really clear that it's highly unlikely that we will get an industry that will be able to replace mining in its entirety, which is why we focus on the diversification in jobs, the diversification in education, the diversification in opportunities for our community to be able to grow, live, work, play, and invest in our LGA.
Ultimately, when you've got, I've got one, one final, yeah. Ultimately, where mining has existed on a site, obviously, the landscape has already been changed and it's never really going to return back. What do you say to those people that actually, I guess, want to abandon that site altogether and just return it to, you know, trees and grass?
It's a very good question and it's a very difficult question to unpack. It's incredibly complex, you know. To be able to retrofit anything to be something else is much harder than what it is to start with the end in mind. Our view has always been, start with the end in mind, plan with an outcome, with an intended outcome. So what we would say to them is that you need to think about that very clearly because it's not just about whether the state government has responsibilities, it's not just about whether or not local council has responsibilities or the community has responsibilities. It's also about industry having a commercial responsibility to actually manage their land in a way that will create a higher and better use at some point in the future. I think the timing to have that conversation with industry is now. I think they're very open to that as a conversation. Certainly in our experience in the conversations we've had recently with industry, that has very much been the case. And we would very much like to be able to continue to have those conversations at a local level because we get development interest in our land, not in mining land, but in our land, we get development interest all the time. And quite often, they will ask us, you know, do you have a parcel of land that's 400 hectares in size where we can do X, Y, and Z and it's a permissible land use? 99% of the time, that land exists in the 92,000 hectares of land that we have that's been unplanned for.
Thank you.
Thanks. You mentioned in your opening statement and in your submission, it talks about as well the strategic planning that you mentioned. In your submission, it talks about the documents needed, but them being duplicative, leading to inconsistency and complexity. I just wondered if Singleton Council could comment on any work that you've undertaken in this regard and just expand on this inconsistency and complexity and how we can address that?
Yeah, so the, sorry, yes. So the current regulatory framework is two-pronged. There's a development application process that mining proponents are required to go through and out of that process, they receive conditions of consent that require them to do a whole range of things, one of which is to develop rehabilitation management plans, meet rehabilitation objectives, and in some cases, in recent times, develop mine closure strategies. In addition to that, they have obligations under the Mining Act which, where they have mining lease conditions that require them to do certain things, which can often be duplicative. In fairness to the government, they've done a lot of work to try and bring those two things together. But what we've found in recent times is that there's a lot of mismatch in that management plan stage where there's a commitment made here that's not duplicated over here. What that does is it creates uncertainty and confusion, it certainly creates confusion for us. And I suspect it creates confusion for our community as well. And it's very difficult, we believe, it's very difficult to then regulate to make sure that the commitments that are being made are actually being met. That's not anybody's fault, that's just the vagrancy of how the system has unfolded over decades of having two overlapping legislative frameworks applying to the same thing. over decades of having two overlapping legislative frameworks applying to the same thing. If we were to look at it in a strategic planning context and we were to take the lens up and have a look at the landscape as a whole, rather than as individual operations, it gives an operator the opportunity to understand what it is that they're looking, that the state government, because the state government makes decisions about how land is used, it enables an operator to look at how that land should be returned, what that land should look like in a post-mining context, and that's done in advance of a mining operator coming in. It goes back to the earlier comment around retrofitting, which is a significantly technical issue to unpack, but there is opportunity, and we see it as great opportunity, to be able to look at the landscape holistically rather than individually. And that's where the confusion's created.
And could you, just for the benefit of the committee, could you give us an example, whether it's a hypothetical one or an actual one that you've encountered about this inconsistency and complexity that can arise and how that can cause confusion for the community?
So, I think in our submission, we gave a broad example where, if memory serves me correct, you know, an operator could be asked to provide a rehabilitation management plan as a condition of consent under the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act, and then also be required to complete a mining operations plan under the Mining Act, which is effectively the same thing, how are they going to rehabilitate their site? Commitments that can be made in a rehabilitation management plan through no fault of their own could be done by one consultant and you can have another consultant doing a mining operation plan over here. Those two things don't necessarily talk to each other, they're quite lengthy documents, they're very complex, they include highly technical information about the way in which management action's going to be undertaken to rehabilitate, and it's quite often, and they're required to be reviewed at a fairly regular basis. So, when you look at all of that in its entirety, you can see that complexity is introduced and uncertainty can be introduced through that process as well. Does that provide a reasonable example?
Yeah, thank you. I think one of the key parts of that that I now understand is that consultants are doing this work, therefore, which would also then introduce inconsistency.
Potentially, yeah.
Can I add something further? You know, when we talk about the concern of our community, we have recently completed our community engagement for our next community strategic plan, and one of the, well, really the number one priority that came out from the community is opportunities for our youth, and obviously concerned about, you know, youth opportunities moving into the future, and you can obviously see the connection between those things.
Yeah, absolutely. In terms of the mine closure strategies that you mentioned, which are now obviously a requirement, does Singleton have any indication of how many of the operations have one in place and are you aware of what they, you know, what they say broadly?
In short, no. So, most conditions of consent require a mining operator to commence undertaking mine closure planning about five years from when they look to finish operations. In our view, that's not the right time. The right time to do that should be when you're asking for permission to obtain consent in the first place. And we've made that very clear in a number of submissions that we've made to the Independent Planning Commission and other agencies as well, where the planning for mine closure is also a requirement under the International Council on Mining and Metallurgy that a lot of mining operators signatories to as well. We find it really challenging, it doesn't mean that it doesn't exist, but we find it really challenging to see publicly available information on the way in which mine closure is undertaken operationally in our LGA. That's not to say that it doesn't exist, it's just not public facing.
Yep, thank you, that's useful to know. How, the final question for me before I hand over to my colleagues, just in the interest of time. How does council plan to balance the need for a quick redevelopment or quick transition, transformation, whatever you want to call it, with the long-term residual risks to the community and to the environment?
That's a very good question and it's a very challenging answer. So, I think the way that we're proposing to do it is to start with the end in mind and to actually, we've actually developed a framework that looks at some of the things that Mel mentioned in her opening statement around what are the constraints and opportunities? One of the biggest constraints to being able to achieve a post-mining outcome is permissible land use. So, we're quite fortunate, we have a reasonably flexible local environmental plan, which enables a lot of development to take place on RU1 land, which is what mining is zoned. And so, we have, currently and are at the moment undertaking a rural land use strategy, which is looking at all of our land that's zoned rural, which includes mining land, for employment, tourism, conservation, mining and housing consequences, so we can understand how it's currently used and what should it possibly be used for in the future. That's the first step around identifying the constraints and some of the opportunities that are available that could generate quick win conversations with our partners at Regional New South Wales and the Department of Planning.
Thank you. Mr Higginson.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just curious about what your view and lens is in terms of the retraining further education opportunities and the role of the state at the moment and the companies and where the, what you're seeing. Are you seeing, you know, movements in the community where these opportunities, I know you were talking about, it's about the opportunities arising, are you seeing any of that early work happening or are you feeling like it's just not getting what it needs?
We feel that it's probably somewhat uncoordinated, so there's a lot of work, Musclebrook talked about the work that they're doing, we're doing a lot of work to investigate and understand the way in which people might seek to undertake new work. We recently had a careers expo a couple of weeks ago where we had quite a few people, you know, you normally target youth when you're doing careers expos, but we also had people who came through that expo looking for a transition themselves, not necessarily from mining to something else, but a lifestyle balance, for example. So, we're starting to see that there are questions being asked in our community about what other job opportunities there might be. What we're not really seeing is the investment in those skill centres to look at providing diversified training opportunities for our youth, as Mel mentioned, but also for those who might want to transition into something that's not a mining-related job. We're not seeing that investment at that local skills centre space. The other thing that we have that works against us a little bit is around the cost of living. It's expensive to live in a mining community and the current rate of pay for an apprentice and a trainee is just not equitable to being able to live independently within a mining community. So, in our submission as well, we raised the need to incentivise, and that may not necessarily be increasing their pay, it may be in other ways, to enable apprentices and traineeship opportunities to be offered to the youth in our community, in our community.
And get some, potentially be looking at those other cost of living pressure releases so that there's encouragement to kind of... I'm just curious about the, what your council sees in terms of, like Musclebrook made a strong submission about needing to be nature positive and go forward on that kind of basis, is that fundamental to your vision and is that what your community understands in terms of? We have had some submissions to this inquiry that were, you know, very, they kind of provided a sort of evidenced case about, hey, with this boom and with this mining, regional, where we've landed, we've ended up with a nature deficit and we've driven that, been very conscious of that, with an understanding somewhere in that broader public interest long-term narrative that we would repay the nature deficit and the debt. How do you see that in terms of the role particularly of Yorkshire and do you see it as part of the kind of regional conversation and part of the broader state conversation?
I think ours is about balance, isn't it? And about that there is, you know, options for a combination of that, so we see it as very important, but we also see it as needing to be part of the conversation as well in terms of jobs, employment, all of that.
So, just to further Mel's statement, we've recently undertaken and completed in consultation, in conjunction, sorry, with Cessnock Council, a destination management plan, and a key focus of that destination management plan was ecotourism. So, we see the potential for ecotourism in our LGA as a very significant opportunity for growth for us. We have two large national parks and one World Heritage Area to our south, and we also have some to our north-east. And the connection between those two is broken by a highway and a series of mining operations in the valley floor. So, we've also recently completed for the first time a high values biodiversity mapping exercise of our entire LGA, where we looked at a range of different factors that can benefit or impact the ability for biodiversity to be re-established in our LGA. We've done that for two reasons, one is so that we could identify potential biodiversity corridors, but the second reason is that, as you quite rightly point out, mining does have an impact on biodiversity values, it has had an impact on biodiversity values in the past, and what we want to do is be strategic around the way in which we might be able to recover those values by creating corridors and strategically targeting future biodiversity areas in a post-mining world as well as in the current operational world.
Fantastic, thank you. And just finally, I did ask Musclebrook this, but in terms of that governance framework, in terms of this committee's work to go and suggest things to the state government, is your, does it appeal to you in terms of having that one-stop shop of, from the state government, whether it's an office of commission or whatever it is, as long as it's not a closed gate and it's another hurdle to jump? But is that something that you think your council would benefit from in terms of working forward about post-mine beneficial land use and those communications with the state government and the 16 agencies?
Yes, and I think we're saying we need both, we need that authority that has the statutory authority and the resources to obviously help lead and facilitate that. In addition, we also are a small regional council and we need, we need resources and funding to be able to do that very important land use strategic piece that we're talking about, so it's a combination of things that are necessary.
And to further Mel's point, irrespective of who leads, ultimately, the questions about what we do and how we do it, how we engage with our community, what our land use planning objectives are, come back to council. So, we need to be resourced to be able to support the really important work that this inquiry is doing and also the outcomes of the Future Jobs and Investment Authorities as well. We can't do that with the resources that we currently have, we need support to be able to achieve that.
So, if anything, any other body or body would actually be more like it's there as your agent as opposed to the agent of the state government, it's there to do your work, the work that you need it to do, rather than, yeah, based on what your community feeds in, which is your strategy, that's kind of what I'm hearing, that that's the way it would need to be. It needs to be community-led and council's the best body to tell state government what that is and then make state government do it without you having to go and deal with the plethora of bodies saying, but we just told them that's what we want, now we've got to tell you we want this, or this is how it looks, as well as partnership, obviously.
Yeah, and I agree, and sometimes we do feel like we're having the same conversation with multiple different agencies, so, and it's a very important conversation, and I guess, and we keep having it because we really want to emphasise it's really important that we're starting this now. So, if we had, you know, one authority that was really facilitating that and was the, you know, the leading it and had the statutory authority to do that, that would be something that could really make a difference.
Can I ask as a follow-up from that, just setting aside, obviously you've mentioned the authority, the statutory authority, the need for additional funding and support for the local council, are there any other ways that the current post-mining land use framework should be adapted to accommodate the needs of local councils like Singleton?
I think it's really, it's a really complex landscape at the moment. If anything, simplifying that would be the way to go. We see the way to simplify it is to take the strategic lens, because the strategic lens will tell the development and developers what needs to happen on the ground. At the moment, that strategic piece of work doesn't exist, so we're kind of rudderless in terms of where we're going. So, we think that council is the best place to be able to do that strategic work, we've developed a framework to enable us to move forward on that, we believe that we can achieve that in about five years with around $5 to $8 million of investment, and we've done some foundational work already to enable us to inform what that work might be like, our high values biodiversity mapping that we just talked about.
And so, that five years that you mentioned, given some of the time constraints, the urgency, is that sufficient? Do you have a view around whether or not we need to be trying to do that sooner without trying to compromise the outcome?
I think there's opportunity to accelerate in certain areas, there's no doubt. I think the framework can be applied at scale, the framework that we've developed can be applied at scale. So, I think there's definitely opportunities where that can be applied quickly and to enable opportunities to be realised, so some quick wins, I think the department refers to them as. There's definitely opportunity for that. I think the really important thing though is to create those strategic levers that enable investment to come into the LGAs that need it the most as soon as possible. And without putting too fine a point on it, without having that strategic piece of work, it's really difficult to have strategic conversations.
So, the Hunter Regional Plan, you don't view that as being a strategic plan for the region, or is there a need for that to go one step further in terms of?
Yes.
Being more prescriptive?
The Hunter Regional Plan provided a really good foundation, it identified that post-mining land is regionally significant, which is a huge step forward for us in our advocacy. It needs to go to that next level down though, so it's identified that, it's identified that there are lead agencies associated with that, it's now about putting the rubber to the road and actually doing the work that's needed to identify what a regionally significant growth area should look like in the future.
And so, from your view, a possible next step could be to liaise with councils like Singleton, like Musclebrook, on the work that they have already done? You mentioned you've already done some work around developing a framework, and it's certainly set out somewhat in your submission. Would that be a good place to start, would you say?
Yes, so underpinning our framework, we've also identified and established a governance framework for that, so we recognise and understand that we're not a regulatory agency, we don't have the power to change legislation, so we recognise that we need to have many people sitting at the table with us. So, we've also developed a governance framework around how to undertake that work and hold people accountable to the delivery of that work, because what we don't want to see is a situation where we have lots of fabulous discussion and we identify that there are things that need to be done, but there's actually no accountability for doing the work. So, the governance framework that we've developed looks at making sure we've got the right people in the room, including, as Mel said, the people who can make decisions, as well as our community and other players as and when they need to be involved.
Do you have any final questions? Yeah, I just wanted to know your view in terms of, do you think that the companies now should be providing a particular revenue stream to assist your capacity? I know that Musclebrook was saying it in terms of its council capacity, and I don't mean, you know, a direct, oh, here's a person because there's, you know, perceptions there of, you know, advantage, disadvantage, whatever, but do you think that that should be something that the mining industry should, as a, you know, requirement, be assisting you in terms of the extra capacity you may need in the next 10, 20 years while we navigate this next use of land space?
I think it's less about providing financial re- I think it's less about providing financial resources and more about collaboration and capacity building. So within council, we're local developers, you know, we deal with local development. We don't deal with state significant development and in terms of assessment. So the skills needed within local councils to be able to work with the state government to deliver post-mining land use outcomes are very difficult to obtain. There's few people in local government who can make that transition between mining and the complexity of mining and the strategic land use planning outcomes. I think it's more about collaboration with industry. We're not asking industry for more money, we're asking industry to engage with councils on a more regular basis about how we can help them deliver outcomes for them that benefit not just our community but also them. Because at the end of the day, they're a transitional land user. They will be, they will leave our LGA at some point, and we want to make sure that what they leave us with doesn't leave a burden for our community. So collaboration and capacity building, both in terms of building capacity within industry as well, about the way in which land is designed and planned and used, is very different to the way in which land is mined. So we can also support industry in building their capacity and understanding around how to achieve these strategic outcomes without being too complicated about it or asking for money.
Thank you. That's all we have time for for this session, but thank you so much to you both for making time to give evidence to the inquiry. It was really valuable for us to hear directly from you. If there are any supplementary questions, our committee secretariat will be in touch with you with regards to those.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated it.
Thank you. Okay, we might commence. Thank you. Welcome to our next witnesses, who are appearing both in the room and online. If I could ask by, if I could, sorry, start by asking yourself in the room, Ms Smiles, to state your name, title, and take either the oath or affirmation, and then we'll move to those online.
Thank you. I'm Beverley Smiles, Secretary of Wallar Progress Association, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now to those online, and if you could just give us a wave when you're talking, just so our hand side knows who is speaking when. If I could ask each of you to also state your name, position, title, and swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Okay.
Go first.
My name is Colin Emery. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
And now, my name's Julia Emery. We are landowners in the Upper Hunter. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making an opening statement? Perhaps we'll start with you, Ms Smiles.
Thank you, and thank you for the invitation to be a witness of this inquiry hearing. So I'd like to first acknowledge the traditional owners on whose land we're meeting today, the Waranua, sorry. I can't say it. Wanarua, Wanarua, sorry. And pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging. So we thought amongst the three of us, we'd like to start with just a brief introduction of ourselves. So I've been an active resident of the Wallar community for over 40 years. During that time, I've held positions on various government committees. I was a trustee on the Hunter Catchment Management Trust before it changed to a catchment management authority. I represented the environment on the Hunter River Management Committee, and I was a board member of the EPA when it still had roles for community representatives. I'm currently on the community consultative committees of the three large coal mining operations in my district. And I'm also a community representative on the Central West Orana Renewable Energy Zone Community Reference Group. The approval of the Peabody Wilmong John Coal Mine in 2006, the first new greenfield coal mine in New South Wales at the turn of the 21st century, has wrought great social upheaval, environmental pollution and stress on my community of Wallar. Through all my committee activities, I've gained a long-term understanding of the impacts of the coal boom in the Hunter and Mudgee regions. And I'm also fully aware of the opportunities available now through the renewable energy transition. Thank you. So I'll hand over to Colin and Julia.
Thank you.
You want to go first?
Okay, I shall go first. Dr Julia Emery, I have a PhD from Australian National University, researching surface and groundwater interaction in the Golden River, Upper Hunter Catchment, in the context of climate change. And my current interest in detail is the groundwater dependent ecosystems, that's my area of study now. My other degrees are in ecology and in land management. I was on the board of the Hunter Central Rivers Catchment Management Authority for the whole term between 2004 and 2013. And I've conducted over the years various vegetation surveys and reports for New South Wales Forestry and National Parks and Wildlife Service. I currently do some casual work with the environmental science, as an environmental science educator at Red Hill Environmental Education Centre. And our family currently operates the Golden River Stone cottages. This is our main business, a successful cottage retreat accommodation. We've developed this up since the early 1980s to be a very successful business. But it's downstream from the major coal mines, Yulun and Malabon, and I do actually sit on the triple, the community consultation committee for both Yulun and Malabon. So over these years, since the early 70s, I have observed and studied the impact of mining on the river system following major mine expansions in the 1980s, the 2004, that's Wilmong John, and of course, the development of the Malabon Coal Mine in 2007, which of course is planning further expansions. So I'll pass over to my husband, Colin.
Yeah. My name is Colin Emery. With Julia, I have lived in the Yulun-Wallar area on the Golden River, Upper Hunter, since the mid 1970s. We operate a rural tourism business, Golden River Stone cottages, and I make furniture from our native timber. And horses, and previously I've worked as a timbercutter and rural contractor. I'm a volunteer firefighter, currently Senior Deputy of Kumbo Rural Fire Brigade. These are my views, though, and not those of the RFS. The key message I'd like to convey is the scale and impact of coal mining on this landscape, river and community. The legacy of these impacts, the necessity for ongoing management and rehabilitation for generations to come, is a burden that's growing with these ever-expanding coal mines. The costs of mining coal for our local communities and environmental assets and water resources continue to escalate as these mines are intending, despite all evidence, to continue their expansions for decades into the future. The world is changing, however, and there is a risk that the extensive coal mining and processing infrastructure established at such cost and grief is now in danger of becoming stranded assets. There will never be a cheaper time than now to transition to a beneficial and productive post-mining land use. I congratulate the members of this inquiry and wish you every success in making a post-mining plan towards a safer, less destructive future. Thank you.
Thank you both. We'll now move to questions, and I'll start with the Honourable Wes Fang.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for both appearing today and, sorry, both, like both set of witnesses, I should say, for appearing today and giving your time up. Ms Smiles, could I just ask, so you represent the Wallar Progress Association. How many members does your organisation have? How big is the, I guess, population of Wallar itself?
Well, before the mine arrived, we had between 300 and 400 people in our district. It's now down to somewhere between 30 and 40. So we've had a major depopulation as a direct result of the mine, the Open Cut Mine.
Is it, is it a village itself, or is it basically just, I guess, more of a, like a region?
No, no, there's a village that did have 80 residents, private property owners. There's now only one private property left in the village, and there's some crown land, the recreation facilities and the hall that the Wallar Progress Association are the crown land managers of. So, you know, the bulk of the volunteer work that goes on in any small rural community is now falling on the shoulders of fewer and fewer people.
I grew up in a small little community called Yurinquinti, and so the Yurinquinti Progress Association has the hall, I imagine it'd be similar arrangement, so that you've got your, I guess, the volunteer, the local residents become the volunteers and they provide the community assets for community to use?
That's right, well, it's the social centre of our community, because our school has been closed down as well through loss of pupils.
So when you said there's 80 residents, did you say, is that, that's in the wider area?
No, that was in the village, that was the, that was the number of residents in the village. Now there are some houses that are housing drive-in, drive-out mine workers. There are a few that the original owners leased back, they sold to the mine and they're leasing back under particular arrangements. And there are a large number of houses, both in the village and in the surrounding district, that Peabody owns, has not maintained and are now demolishing.
So is, when you say residents, like you said, there was one person in, like one family or one person in the village itself, is it that the rest of the village is basically, I guess, homes for fly-in, fly-out workers that are staying there during, while they're here for mining operations?
Yes, they're the main people left in town now, yeah. And they don't, I mean, they come up, work their shift, sleep when they're not working and then drive back to where they come from, generally somewhere over in the coast that doesn't have mine noise and dust. So, yeah, so, and they don't engage in any way with the social life of the community.
So in relation to the Wallar Progress Association, how do you become a member? Is it, if you're in the postcode, you're granted membership or?
No, no, there's a, you know, you have to join and, you know, turn up to a meeting.
And how many members do you have?
At the moment, as far as a financial membership, I think it'd be about 15 people.
About 15, okay. And I guess in relation to the positions that you have as a community, at a social meeting, you might come together and form the, I guess, the policies of the association?
Yep, I mean, we're there to represent the community, and there's been an association active in Wallar since the 1950s. So there's been a long legacy of the community gathering, you know, lobbying for various, you know, like improvements to our roads and those types of things, so working with council, but also helping residents deal with the really quite intense problems that have occurred once the mine moved in.
And in relation to, I guess, other people that reside in the village, like those in the mines, do you offer them an opportunity to participate in the Progress Association as well?
Oh, everyone's welcome to come along, yeah.
Okay. I just want to take you back to 2018. Were you part of the Wallar Three?
I was, yes.
And who represented you in court?
That'd be me. Oh, okay, yeah. That was originally the Environmental Defenders Office, I think.
And I think we had, who was the senior counsel who represented you? I can't even remember his name, Philip Bolton, my senior criminal counsel, and you won the constitutional challenge in that case, yeah. I remember that.
No, that's okay, Ms Higginson.
I'm not sure how it quite relates to the terms of reference.
Well, no, it was just interesting, it was just interesting that there was no declaration, I guess, there, but what was the arrest in relation to and the charges?
Well, apologies, Mr Fang, is this related to the post-mining land use?
Well, I'm just, I'm seeking to understand the motivation for the submission and the evidence. And so I'm noting that there was no declaration that Ms Sue Higginson had represented Ms Smiles and as one of the Wallar Three that was arrested.
Sorry, point of order, point of order. Is this, if you have a problem with another member of the committee, then we can take that up in an appropriate forum.
No, I was just seeking to understand the...
But at the moment, I think the discourteousy that is being afforded to the witness should really end at this point.
I don't think I've been discourteous at all. I think I was actually being quiet, I was just trying to make an understanding.
I've made a point of order and I'm making it to the Chair. To the point of order, I'd encourage you, Mr Fang, to bring your questions back to the inquiry, terms of reference. And the submission that's been very well put together by the Wallar Progress Association...
It's an excellent submission, deal with it.
I'm happy to let Ms Higginson continue.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms Smiles and the Emerys, thank you very much for your time and coming today. Just going to your submission, Ms Smiles, the point about the need for the beneficial reuse of land for the particular mine, you say really needs to be that biodiversity outcome because of the loss that has been suffered with the mine, and in particular the Regent Honeyeater. Could you just expand on what, you know, where that perspective comes from?
Well, with both the Wilmong John Mine and the other two that are adjacent mines, there is a set of critically endangered populations and species in our region, the Regent Honeyeater being one of them. So when the mine was first approved, there were Regent Honeyeater recordings on the site of the approval, and the first approval was a requirement to acquire biodiversity offset land, which occurred to the southeast with an addition to the Wollamire National Park. Then with the consequent expansions of this mine, there were other pieces of land found adjacent to the Golden River National Park as biodiversity offsets to meet the credits for this critically endangered species. So every expansion of this mine was going to clear critical habitat for a critically endangered species. With the last big expansion, which was the one I was protesting against, the arrangement through the conditions of approval was that most of the currently approved land rehabilitation would have to be converted... would have to be converted to Regent Honeyeater habitat. So some of the rehabilitation, the mine had already undertaken under past conditions, they've been required to come back and redo it and plant specific species that are habitat for the Regent Honeyeater. Now, we've also now had two 500 KV power lines approved under the Central West Arana Res to go through that. So that biodiversity offset has now got to be offset somehow, somewhere else by Energy Co. to find some more credits to offset the offset. But what's happening in our region is this incremental, ongoing loss of critically endangered ecological communities and species like Regent Honeyeater.
And is it the case that the, in terms of the Regent Honeyeater, this is the, literally the bird that's nearly, like, down to a couple of individuals? And I think the Premier was recently boasting that we bred some eggs in a zoo somewhere, like, we really are talking about the last kind of line or frontier.
Well, that, that was the other part of the conditions, was that Peabody Energy has to pay money to Dubbo Zoo for the breeding programme.
Right. And so in, so your submission in relation to this particular project is that really it would be perverse if any other end use or rehabilitation was to be taken away from what this vision is here or the need and what is set down in the current rehabilitation requirements?
Well, our key problem with this mine is it's going to, well, it's attempting to continue to expand and the previous government handed out a new exploration licence that circles the village. So we've not only got Peabody not maintaining the houses that it already owns in a housing crisis and demolishing them, they're also now looking to continue expanding this mine and continue removing the same threatened species habitat around the village. So there's absolutely no certainty at all for my community about what our future looks like. And for any of the mines, both in the Mudgee area, which last year were the three largest coal producers in the state, the three of them are in expansion mode. There are a number of mines in the Hunter in expansion mode. So when this final landform is actually going to occur and under what circumstances is, is very uncertain because it is a moving feast of change. And listening to the previous speakers talking about strategic planning, like, in my experience, we had the Upper Hunter Synoptic Plan that, that had laid out various outcomes, particularly biodiversity corridors, and, and the community tried to revive that about 10 years ago and there were meetings and round tables and it just disappeared. We had the Upper Hunter Strategic Regional Land Use Plan, again, looking at all of the types of things that we're talking about that's needed now. That happened in, I think, 2012. So we keep sitting around the table, sorry, going through these processes and, and they just disappear. And here we are, and, and for some mines we're at a pointy end. But from my perspective, and I'd like to hand over, Colin and Julia probably have some comments, from my perspective, the Peabody Coal Mine, Wilmongjong Mine currently has approval till 2033. That's plenty of time to sort out, you know, the arrangements. Yulun Coal Mine the same and Malaban Mine is, has approval to 2038. So if the government is serious about this transition and, and, you know, containing the emissions, both from the state and, you know, what's happening globally, that all come back to bite us anyway, then, you know, we have to get serious to not continue expanding these coal mines on into the forever. So, yeah, I'd like to see Colin and Julia.
And with this Emma, I would love if you could expand a little bit on the, the continuing water management issue, you know, groundwater, surface water, and this, you, you make a really strong point about this ongoing legacy. Would love you to expand on that if you could, please. I think you're, you're on, you're on the mute.
I'm muted now.
Thank you.
My apologies. One of the drawbacks of coal mining, particularly underground coal mining, longwall coal mining, is that they decept a lot of groundwater. And of course, in order to be able to mine the area, they have to withdraw the water, the water make is, and the whole groundwater system is drawn down. Now, this just doesn't affect just the coal seam, it also affects the upper aquifers due to subsidence and obviously drainage down into the void or the goph in the case of an underground mine. This has, to the point in this area where there is a lot of groundwater, they never, they always under-predicted the groundwater, the modelling always under-predicted the groundwater, they still battle with it. But they have licences to discharge up to 50 million litres a day of groundwater or accumulated water, some of that is surface water, but the bulk of it is groundwater, which is treated to, to a level that's accepted by the EPA. And this is suppressing the whole groundwater situation in this area. Now, this is going to take a long time to recover. It's not going to recover, and it's going to have to be mitigation, there's going to have to be management. This has got to be part of the plan. They can't just walk off and say, oh, well, in a hundred years, the groundwater levels will recover, you'll have it back then, you know. Meanwhile, we lose all our groundwater dependent ecosystems, the river doesn't flow whenever it's not raining, et cetera. So now we run a very successful tourism business here, it supports our family. If we want to expand, you know, which we can't because we've got coal mines around us, but there certainly would be lots of options there. There's also a lot of indigenous cultural value in this area or, or significance and I'm sure that there could be something in that area, the local indigenous groups would, could take that a long way as well. But at the moment, we're hemmed in by not only the existing mines, but also the, the expansions that they're, and the developments that they're moving towards now. So it's, we're at the pointy end and it really is important that we start acknowledging those long-term impacts, how we might be able to manage them into the future. Because at the moment, they do release this water and it tends to mask the fact that we've lost our base flows to the river. By drawing down the groundwater, we no longer get that into the river, but that is sort of, I suppose, augmented by the fact that they release groundwater from the, from the mines. Post-mining, that's not going to happen. So that's got to, got to be faced. I cannot, can't see, nowhere discussed in any future plans. So I suppose that's sort of the, that's, those two sides of things. You don't have, like, without water, you know, we can't have development, we can't have people, communities, et cetera. And at the moment, the area, the Drip Gorge and the Goban River is a very big tourist draw. We have 50,000 people clocked walking down to the Drippenback per year, that's, that's the national parks' figures. So there's the potential there for this community to bounce back, but it's got to be acknowledged and it's got to start happening now. I might pass over to Colin.
Well, yeah, I could only add to that is that it's, it's really a matter of stop making things worse. The, while we've got some amount of our groundwater, some amount of our community left, some structures such as houses in Wallar that Bev was talking about, there, it will be possible then to rebuild our lost fire brigades, for instance, our lost voluntary organisations and social organisations as well.
And do you see that, do you see that, when you talk about your community can bounce back or come back, do you see that that is through, is there a role for a growing community in the rehabilitation and regeneration of these areas and the continued monitoring of them? Is that, is that part of that vision of bouncing back post-mining, assuming at some point they do stop?
I, I think so. Certainly there's a lot of rehabilitation work that's going to be required and that would support, and this is not going to end in five, 10, 20 years. We're talking about a long term. This has got to be managed. There's huge problems of weeds and feral animals and so forth in, on this land and it's exacerbated by the way it's been put under pressure for mining. Certainly the open cut areas where you've got massive disturbances, very difficult to get them back to natural, sustainable bushland. Like, I did a fair bit in my undergraduates on mine rehabilitation. And it, it, you can get trees back on paddocks, but you don't get a self-sustaining ecosystem. Now, that's going to have to be managed well into the future. I can see jobs in that, in that area. But there's also jobs in tourism as well and like some of the, you know, some of the big dams, I suppose, and so forth, not, not the void so much, but some of the, the holding dams and so forth, you know, can be used for, for pump hydro and, and also for recreational. I know Yulun has a, an area where they, they pump out onto, it's a very shallow dam area.
Ah, dear.
The mines of.
I was just about to say mine interception, no doubt.
We'll give them a moment to see if they come back.
No, we haven't, we haven't got particularly good.
Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. I think we might have swapped satellites. The one disadvantage with the Starlink is that you do tend to swap satellites and lose people for a little while. I don't know quite where, where we lost you there.
No, it's great to have you back and so quickly.
It does come back quite quickly. Yeah, so there is a lot of, I think, potential there as well, done sensitively, obviously. And I agree with Bev in that we can't do this at the loss of biodiversity, we've already lost a lot of biodiversity. And this is going to take time to recover and it's going to take management, it's going to take expert management. So there is definitely, I think, employment in these areas and the mine should be paying for that.
One of the things I was curious about in terms of all the mines that you've got a very close lens on, are you seeing, have those mines already commenced a iterative rehabilitation process as part of their approvals? And if you are seeing that, are you seeing it, is it looking successful? Is the, you know, because we've seen that in some of the other mines with progressive rehabilitation, just curious.
Yeah, they were required. The more newer mines obviously had, had far more conditions that they had to do a progressive rehabilitation. Most of it tends to occur where you can see it, you know, off the roads and so forth. I don't know how deep it goes. Look, most of them at the moment are young trees on paddocks. A lot of the places are far too dense. Now, you know, given time and, and management, you could thin them out, that's not necessarily a, a bad thing in the long term, but it does require management. And, you know, you've also, I, I, they're looking reasonably healthy, certainly the ones you can see from the road, they're growing quite well. But, you know, there is, you've lost your groundwater, well, your strata, so which would be if you, if you'd have a groundwater system that would have supported some of these areas. And around here, we have a reasonable rainfall, but you know where the, where the trees are that get groundwater, there's these massive, you know, big yellow boxes or stringy barks and, and, you know, they don't grow just from the, from the rainfall, they've got their roots down into the groundwater system. Well, that groundwater system has been, you know, seriously disrupted, particularly in the footprint and, and outside the footprint within, you know, a kilometre or a couple of kilometres from, from the, the mining area. So all those, all this stuff is not really being investigated or understood, I don't believe, for how it's going to respond in the long term. And we could be facing quite a serious issue in this area if the mines just move and, and stop managing the water. Because at the moment, it's where a regulated system, an unofficial regulated system, the way that they release water down the river.
Yeah, look, I'd just like to, just back to the job opportunities and the insecurity for the community because of the current approval conditions for the Peabody Mine, it's supposed to be winding down as of next year. And we've had a couple of younger people moving back to the district with the expectation, you know, the mine's going to close up and that there will be other work. And that type of, you know, re-vedge work is what some of them have had training in anyway and ecology, so, you know, lots of skill base. But it's not only the rehabilitated mine land, because these companies have had to go and acquire biodiversity offset land, some of it has been included into national parks. But Malaban Mine in particular has a lot of biodiversity offset land that's hodgepodge all over the place, nowhere near a national park. National parks aren't interested in taking it off their hands. So there's some work there, it's a matter of who is going to be the long-term manager of those biodiversity offset lands, once the mine does eventually go away. And, and I think one of the fears we all have is that something will happen internationally, the price of coal will fall through the floor. These multinational companies, while they're being our friends and handing money to our sporting bodies and the things that they do, they'll just upstumps and walk away. I mean, I, I, I know I sound quite cynical, but, you know, what, why wouldn't they? And, and, and I think that's the concern everyone's expressing, is that it's the community and the taxpayer that's going to be left with a burden. And, and again, that's why I don't see there's a strong argument for allowing them to stay here and continue on mining up to 2050.
And do you think there's, do you have any knowledge about whether the rehabilitation bonds are commensurate with the obligation and their on-ground reality? I think, I mean, I think we've had audit to generals reports that suggest not, they're not commensurate, but.
Yeah, I think everyone's had that concern for a long time. And I, and I think back to your original question about having the rehabilitation happening while, with the mining, like, having the, in the, what is it, Natural Resources Access Regulator, I mean, there, there was a real change in attitude towards regulating the rehabilitation and that actually, when I was on the EPA board, we flew over the Hunter and, and there was just raw dirt everywhere, everyone was shocked. And, you know, started, the ball started rolling, asking questions, what on earth is going on about the rehabilitation? And things started to move. And it has taken some time, but, and then while the previous speakers were talking about there being rehabilitation management plans and mine closure plans, my understanding, mine operation plans, my understanding, they've now been mashed together into the mine closure plans and there is a requirement to really start thinking sooner rather than later. But quite a few of the companies are, while they're going through the paperwork, what they're actually working on is their next DA. And quite a few of them, that's what they're doing. So there's no real certainty about what this rehabilitation plan or transition plan or future plan is going to look like. And I was quite interested in today's Newcastle Herald was a report on the, the climate predictions that have been done for the Hunter Region, had been reported on now. And, you know, higher temperatures, lower rainfall, you know, worse droughts, more severe fires, it's, it's a scenario we're not really comfortable with looking down the barrel of because out our way, we've already had all of that happen to us just recently. And the thought that we're going to continue increasing our carbon footprint off into the never, never is quite concerning. And also that the rehabilitation itself is likely to be affected by these more severe weather effects and the mining operations themselves. So I've seen with our three mines, like, with the, the worst floods in history, the worst drought in history, the worst bushfires in history, actually prevented those three mines from operating at particular periods of time. And it's also really impacted on the one railway line from Yulun to the port of Newcastle. Takes a train 12 hours to bring a load of coal down from those mines down to Newcastle. And there was heat buckling in quite a few places along the line. One area caused a. One area caused a train to derail, started major bushfire. But that buckling had occurred at other places. That railway line's been down, being fixed more often now than it's open. So and and we've had an indication from at least one of the companies that one of the reasons they're not producing what they've been given approval to produce is their access to the railway line. So there's a whole heap of constraints going on now that are weather related. You know, I just can't see that there is a long term future for the industry if it's business as usual and and these climate extremes keep, you know, getting worse.
Can I just jump in with a couple of questions now? Thanks, Ms Higgins. In terms of the post-mining land use that the committee is looking at, Ms Smiles and and to the to the Imries online as well, would you agree that it is very much on a case by case basis? And so that the situation at Wallah, Yulun, is going to be somewhat different to, say, the Mount Arthurs of this world, the Muscle Brook Coals of this world or other things?
Definitely, because, I mean, the mining's been happening for a lot longer period of time here in the in the hunt between Muscle Brook and Singleton, and it's such a large percentage of the landform. Which is why we concentrate what's going on up our area, sort of suddenly realising, you know, these are the biggest producers in the state. They're they're relatively new, while the Yulun Mine's been there since the mid eighties. The other two are relatively new mines. And and, you know, it would be good for them to be, you know, contained sooner rather than later. But the whole business of the biodiversity outcomes is and the water management is quite critical in our area. And the other thing we haven't mentioned is because it's all sandstone escarpment country, the loss of those habitats is either through subsidence or just being literally knocked over. And the scale of the cliffs that are being sheared off, particularly at the Malabon Mine, getting rid of all, you know, cave overhangs and all that other habitat that critically endangered species like bats use. That's just all totally irreplaceable. So it's the fact that the the approvals process is mine by mine. Then really what you do with mine by mine is probably, you know, what we're facing at the moment.
To the Imries online now.
Look, we missed the second half of your question, I'm afraid, we just faded out for a moment.
Another satellite. The question was around post-mining land use being on a case by case basis. So the situation, you know, you're facing in Yulun is not going to be, it's going to be different in some ways to other areas.
Yeah, it has to be, yeah, it has to be holistic, you know, from the landscape point of view. And that's how you manage, you know, the landscape is looking at it from all three mines together. There does need to be an overarching plan, definitely. I would agree with that. Obviously, each mine would have slightly different aspects to it. You know, Yulun at the moment is mainly underground, it doesn't have as much open cut. But it does, it does have a legacy of open cut, which is, I think they've managed to sign off one 30 hectare area of it. But, you know, that's dating back to 1985, that's not much considering the time that's gone gone on. So, yeah, it, the, at the moment, they don't tend to work together unless they're forced to, the mines. And I think that there needs to be some sort of panel, independent panel with the with the know how, the patients, to be able to judge what what is working, what isn't working and direct, have a plan, obviously, to direct the future of of these areas such as ours, the Yulun Wallah area, not mine by mine.
Can I ask just a final question in the minute we have left? In terms of the Upper Hunter Synoptic Plan that we mentioned, that you mentioned earlier, I think Ms Smiles, is that something that you think, I've just tried to search for the document while we were discussing. Is that something that you think you would recommend the government go back and look at, reinvigorating? Or is it something that is already sort of incorporated enough into the Hunter Regional Plan?
Look, as I say, we tried to re-energise it from the community perspective. There were meetings held in Singleton and and it just seemed to have disappeared again. And we had a lot more mines expansions after that. So the landscape now is actually very different to when it was first developed. But it was, it was a good tool at the time and could still be, you know, useful as to what could be happening. And that that was the aim of the exercise, was to look at the landscape holistically and how would the Hunter Valley come back. But the mining then was nowhere near the scale it is now. And I think we've left ourselves with a horrendous task, actually.
Thank you. Very, very final in, noting that we are over time.
No, no, I appreciate that, but, you know, this is really exciting. Are all of you members of the Mudgee District Environment Group?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
So can I just confirm, you had a post that said you were excited about the rez right up until you realised that Energy Co might put the transmission line somewhere near an area that you didn't really want. And then you protested Energy Co putting the transmission line near your area. Is that my understanding of, because I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the website now. There's obviously get revved up about the rez and you've used a photo from Ausstock, which is probably not quite appropriate, but that's okay. You've then indicated that you're, that you're unhappy that the rez, sorry, the the transmission line might go near the rock, hand on rock.
No, that was before the rez was announced, that was Liverpool Wind Farm, wasn't it, Julie?
Yeah. What was happening was, just to correct you, is that there was a plan to run a transmission line from Casselus through to Yulun, taking it right past the front of these very sensitive areas, the drip, hands on rock, et cetera, through the last little bit of vegetation that the mines hadn't knocked out. And through some farming countries as well, I might add. That was not rez, that was pre-rez. What rez did, they stepped in and they actually removed that transmission line because they identified it as being too destructive. And they consolidated it into the one from Wallah.
Because that would have impacted on your business, wouldn't it?
Not directly, but it would impact on the drip.
Which is, which is, I guess, where.
It would have been probably three or four Ks away from our business. Not not on our land at all, no. It wouldn't have impacted our business directly. It would have impacted our sensibility because every time we'd drive into Mudgee, we'd see all this.
Transmission line?
Transmission lines.
Horrible coal mines.
Shouldn't necessarily be there. But the point was, is that rez recognised, rez recognised themselves that that was not a good, a good pathway for.
Is it fair to say then that that overhead transmission lines for renewable energy zones should not be built at all? That they're potentially.
There is a case, there is a case to be said, that where you can put them underground in sensitive areas, they should go underground. That is what I support.
Okay, so.
That's all we have time for, Mr Fang. We are over time, I know we are over time, and this is the post-mining land use inquiry, I might remind you. Thank you so much to both of you, both appearing online and here, Ms Smiles, for making time to appear and give evidence to this inquiry, we really appreciate.
And just to correct, we're supportive of the rez. I don't know, I don't know where you're getting this, not in our backyard.
Oh, no, the transmission lines, you know.
We're supportive of the rez in sense.
Yeah, and that's there, and you need to move the power, you need to get the, you know, you need the transmission line.
Can I say that we have been, both of us have been on standalone solar for the last 30 years. So we don't actually need transmission lines anyway.
No, I don't think anybody does, I agree with you.
Thank you very much again to you both appearing. If there are any supplementary questions that the committee has, our secretariat staff will be in touch with you for those. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, welcome, and thank you for making time to give evidence to the inquiry today. If I could ask you to start by stating your name, position, title and swearing either the oath or the affirmation, please.
Okay, yes, my name is, my full name's there, I'd normally go by Chris, Chris Loretson, Christian William Loretson, I'm the General Manager for Resource Development for MacEnergy Australia. And in terms of the oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Would you like to start by making an opening statement?
Yes, I would, please.
Please, yep.
Okay, so I pay my respects to the, excuse me, the traditional owners of this land and to elders past, present and emerging. I welcome committee members to Muscle Brook and thank the committee for the opportunity to testify at this hearing on behalf of MacEnergy. Muscle Brook is a diverse and growing centre, which includes a large and vibrant Aboriginal community. And MacEnergy takes great pride in its role as a large local employer and a majority community partner. As the manager of the Mount Pleasant operation, MacEnergy welcomes the opportunity to provide our perspectives on issues of relevance to this inquiry. At a time of significant adjustment for the Hunter Valley, MacEnergy has a unique perspective on post-mining land use topics. While many other local mines are nearing the end of their operating life, Mount Pleasant, which is our operation, has approval to continue operations until 2048. This provides us with the advantage of significant lead time to optimise the many opportunities associated with post-mining land use. Despite this long mine life, we are taking a proactive approach to rehabilitation, progressively restoring the land form as our mining activities move away from where we sit today. As a newer mine, we've been able to implement modern landform design principles from the start. This works already improving the visual amenity as seen from the township of Muscle Brook. In fact, if you look out that window, that's where we are, just across the river. The issue of post-mining land uses of particular importance to this community, given the close proximity of four mining operations. And will have significant ramifications for Muscle Brook for decades to come, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ms Loretson. I might start just by asking you a question with regards to your submission. In your submission, you talk about that Mac considers the New South Wales Government should explore how regulatory settings can encourage other beneficial and constructive land uses that can coexist with mining operations that provide material, local and regional benefits. I just wanted to invite you, if you've got an example of what you think, you know, in in terms of that regulatory framework, how you would, if you've got suggestions for the New South Wales Government?
Okay.
In terms of that approach.
Well, the way we see it is there's kind of a dichotomy where we have to or we comply with the requirements of the Mining Act and with the requirements of our Rehabilitation Management Plan and also our federal EPBC approval. And essentially, that requires us to rehabilitate all our post-mining land to woodland. And specifically, of course, to the white box threatened ecological community, which, you know, was the endemic species prior to white settlement, where 200 years of unrestrained land clearing, particularly on slopes and plains, have removed that community pretty well from the environment. So, you know, that's what we have to do. The question is, and obviously a question for the committee, now that we see the coal industry winding down over time, and we can debate what that timeframe is, but certainly there are mines that are nearing end of life. And there is a renewable energy transition and there are imperatives of climate change and MacEnergy accepts all of those things. It seems to me that with the large amount of mining land, is woodland the correct use? And and I'm not saying it's not, but I'm saying that there are, it's not an either or. I don't, I don't like the, I don't like the or word, I like the and word. So the and word means how can we achieve our biodiversity outcomes and leave a positive legacy? And when you look at, for example, our our mining approval, it says, you know, we're going to use our geoflue rehabilitation technique, which we've implemented from the beginning and which creates a natural looking land form, we're going to plant trees all over it. It may be useful for low intensity agriculture and we're going to leave a big final void. Now, the reason that we've done that is because in particular with the case of a final void, you know, you look for something that on paper requires no ongoing management, it's a set and forget. But is that the legacy that that the community really wants and what else could you do? And we think that at a conceptual level, because we've done some workshops with experts on this, as as have BHP, there are lots of things that you could potentially do. You could do high intensity agriculture. You could utilise the rail infrastructure, which we spent $200 million to build and which we're obligated to tear out. You could use that as a hub for, you know, bulk agricultural commodities. I don't know whether these things are viable, but but we need to do some work on them. We could use the water in the final void for, you know, aquaculture. It doesn't have to turn hypersaline. That process takes hundreds of years. If you manage the water in the void and you allow other water to come in and you, there are all sorts of things that you can use that asset for, which, which, you know, are not set and forget and require management, but deliver a different outcome.
In your submission, you also talk about there being an acute need for alignment between various policy settings and assessment timeframes to provide the clarity and assurance required for such investment decisions. I just wondered if you could expand further on that in terms of what the what the policy settings you see as needing alignment and those assessment timeframes and what clarity and surety is needed that is currently lacking?
So we know as well as anyone else that when you submit an application for a development, there are long lead times and there are challenges. There are always groups that, for whatever reason, might oppose the proposal. And and, you know, legal challenges can cause very long delays. So if we were to explore an alternative land use, then clearly that would have to be a modification to our approval, for example, and the process of going through that would take a long time. We do have obviously a long lead time between when we expect to close and so there is time to get that right. Other mines don't have that lead time. Other mines, if you're if you're close to the end of the life, the hole is going to be where it is and there's not a lot you can do economically to change that. We might have more scope to make certain changes to deliver a different outcome apart from what's in our approval. But obviously we have to, you know, get those approval settings and be allowed to explore these alternatives.
You mentioned about a land use transition regulatory framework to be developed that allows for the modification of rehabilitation objectives and final land uses and the transfer of the associated closure liabilities in parallel with the development of post-mining land use approvals. Are there examples of a framework such as this that exists elsewhere that you could point the committee to, you know, overseas or otherwise, or are we sort of starting from the beginning here?
Yeah, look, I'm not aware of that, but I might just take that on notice and do some research and hopefully give you an answer.
Thank you, that would be very, that would be very helpful. In terms of your your submission, the, there's a comment as well about how to ensure benefits are shared between the community and the mine operators. Do you have a view around what work needs to be done with regards to the New South Wales Government to better allow that benefit sharing, if anything? Government to better allow that benefit sharing, if anything?
Well, I'd imagine it would start with a lot of consultation. That's where I would start.
Thank you, I'll hand over to one of my colleagues now.
Thanks.
Mr. Higginson.
Thank you. Just to be clear, when you say a scheme to allow you, you're clear, nothing stops you from exploring those other potential land uses, but what you're looking or suggesting is that you want something that is, you know, for want of a better term, and I'm not trying to be smart, but something easier than the current system?
Yes, we have, in the past, without going into details, made some suggestions about, you know, ideas that, you know, for example, one of our engineers came up with for an alternative use that could be designed into the land form, and we were told the answer was no, and stick to woodland.
Well then, so is that, so...
So we've, you know, I mean, I guess what I'm after is...
Is that not the right, so are you suggesting though, by that, that that's not the right answer?
Yeah, well, what I'm suggesting is, it would be, I mean, there needs to be a government-led process that, you know, with consultation to say, well, okay, here's your obligation. What are their alternatives that deliver the same biodiversity outcome? And, and, but a better legacy outcome for post-mining land use?
And when is your current, sorry, and I'm sure you said it, but I might have missed it, when is your current approval to mine up until?
December 2048.
So that's a long time away.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and so in that sense, realistically, if the, if, if a government-led, and I'm not sure that's necessarily the view, so far it's more, I think we've heard more sort of council-led and community-led is the, is the best approach, and government's sort of trying to broker what that looks like. But if, if there was a different process, it's reasonable for that process to be looking kind of more at the mines that really are looking at closing now and over the next 10 years, with a view to kind of also looking towards those later projects?
Yeah, I'd agree, that'd be a priority to focus on the immediate issue.
Is there anything, is there anything in your mind's eye as the kind of manager of such a big operation, is there anything in your mind's eye that might be planning on contingencies for finish of mining earlier than that, in terms of market possibilities and that sort of thing?
We, we believe that the export market will continue until, until that period, but if it didn't, then we would simply have to implement our closure planning earlier.
Yeah.
One of the advantages that we have is, we have a low strip ratio, and without boring you with the technicalities...
I've heard it.
That puts us down on, right down at the bottom of the thermal coal, global thermal cost curve. So, if you're in that bottom quartile, by definition, three-quarters of the rest of the seaborne market, which is about a billion tonnes a year, out of the total eight billion tonnes of coal that's mined globally, that, if you're in the bottom quartile, basically there's 750 million tonnes in the market that's higher cost. So you, you could have the situation where the market, over time, reduced to, pick a number of 50%.
And you would be one of...
And we'll still be down here.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that low ratio exists for life of mine. Whereas if you're, if you've got a mine where you're six to one, which is double us, then you're way up higher in that cost curve, and you, you know, price fluctuation can do a lot of damage to your bottom line a lot earlier.
So in essence, though, one of the things that we've kind of had imparted to us quite firmly is that it really, you know, we do have to have a process of looking at potential alternative beneficial reuse of land, but that every mine should, even with a strategic process, you still have to deal with each mine, mine by mine, land by land ultimately. In terms of what you're suggesting, if you're pretty resolute that you'll mine to 2048, realistically, you have got a lot of time to consider and start looking at the feasibility of other projects and where they might fit in the mix in terms of your project, and that you would, you know, you've kind of not got a whole lot to lose really, have you, by exploring those alternative land uses to woodland? Because you've got all this time and this income and this incredible market that will...
The hand-waving isn't recorded on hand side.
Yeah, so in that sense, you're not really materially, really disadvantaged compared to, say, a mine right now that's closing going, oh my gosh, if we keep filling in this, but we've got this great pumped hydro project, that would be a real disadvantage to the state potentially.
Yeah, well...
You're in a different category.
I'm not concerned about disadvantage. What I'm concerned about, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to grab opportunities. And the sooner, the sooner we have got line of sight on what, what can be done, you know, or what, what might be allowed, the more time we can put into planning it. Because what, what we as mining companies don't like is uncertainty. We want to see, you know, we're all engineers or geologists, we like to see, you know, this is the input, that's the output, here's the process, this is what we're going to get. And the earlier we can see that, the better. But I take your point, we've got, we've got time.
You've got more time than others, and at the moment, your strong message from government agencies is, no, you, your reuse really does need to be that critically endangered ecological community return back into the, the budgets for one of a better, biodiversity budget for one of a better term.
Again, recognising the long history of land clearing, and if, if there's a, if there's a deficit, if there's a biodiversity deficit, I think we probably own a few cents in the dollar of it compared to agriculture traditionally.
And just with that, has your project and your most recent approval, has yours included mine rehabilitation as part of any offset scheme?
No, no.
No, thank you.
No, we have a very large offset holding in the Meriwarr Casilis area.
Yeah.
And a small one in Gunnarada, and we manage that under the EPBC approval, and also, ultimately, we will secure some of that under the New South Wales system.
Yeah.
And to answer a question that was asked earlier about how that works, you, when you set up a biodiversity conservation trust, you have to upfront pay the full management costs of that land for, I think it's 20 years, but don't quote me, and then they double that number. So the trust drip feeds that money back to us as the operator. So if we suddenly went broke or disappeared, the government would hold that money and they could still fund the management of the offsets, because I think that was a concern.
I think the issue was that ultimately, yes, but then, so there's some money to do that, but the scheme falls a bit, because there's no actual agency that does that yet. It would have to pass to a government agency to do that.
Doesn't BCT do that?
Well, the, no, the BCT is not a boots-on-ground land manager as such.
No, that's right, but they've got the money to pay someone.
Yeah, the submission has identified a really important gap in the system that the government's going to have to deal with at some point, because you're right, that's the backup scheme, but it's really cash in a bucket, not boots on the ground, so, yeah, it'll be an issue for the government at some point in the future. I've got many more, but I don't want to hold the whole...
Oh, the Honourable Westbank, did you have some questions?
The only real question that I had was, in relation to, I guess, handbrakes on the potential altering of what's approved in relation to rehabilitation, is, I guess, environmental lawfare sort of that, the real handbrake, that you could risk applying for a change of scope in relation to rehabilitation, only for it to be drawn out in the courts for years and years and years by environmentalists that are really just seeking to wreck development in our communities?
I want to be careful not to go on a rant, because I suppose I could.
I'm more than happy if you'd like to, I mean, it's...
Let's, let's just say that, that our system allows people to object to things and take action in the courts, and that's, that's their right, and it's also obviously our right to defend our mine, and we like to be as positive as possible.
I think you just won yesterday, didn't you? Was that you guys, or no, different?
Yes.
It was you, yeah, yeah.
It was us, yes, yeah. So, but you're quite right, if, let's say, for example, we had to do a modification to our approval, once you do that, then you open yourself up for submissions and challenges and all of that.
And when you do that, when you, when you put in a, I guess, an application to alter, you know, what's currently approved for a more beneficial land use for the community, do you receive any government funding or subsidies in relation to any legal challenges or threats that are made to your company?
No, we have to, we generally, we have to wear the cost of that ourselves.
Okay, so, so how does it make you feel then, that, I guess, organisations like the Environmental Defenders Office, I guess, receive government funding to wage war against you and your organisation in order to delay and frustrate the applications that you make? And that, you know, effectively, it's our taxpayer dollars that are, that are being used to fund these environmental terrorists?
Point of order, we're just so far from the terms of reference.
Oh, I think it's exactly on the terms of reference.
We are so far from the terms of reference.
I'm just seeking, I'm just seeking...
I'll allow the question, but remind the member of the terms of reference.
Well, we're not a fan of it, however, we put our operation and our credentials on the line, and you can make all the promises you want about what you're going to do, but what we prefer to do is deliver.
But would it be fair, or do you think that, say, an organisation like the Environmental Defenders Office stands on its own two feet and, you know, funds its own legal environmental attacks on legitimate and appropriate mining applications for the benefit of the communities that those sites are in?
Yeah, look, I'd be, I'd be happy if our, our project can be judged on its merits, you know, there are, every mine creates environmental impacts, and the question is, do the benefits outweigh the impacts? And that's something that we can debate, and, you know, people can take legal action if they feel that the balance is, you know, unduly in one direction or another, or decisions are being made in approvals that are wrong. But I personally believe that we are doing the right thing, and that there are very clear positives, and I recognise the impact that, that we have on climate change, bearing in mind it's our production divided by eight billion tonnes. I also recognise the impact that we have on biodiversity, and as a result, we've got our offsets and we've got our rehabilitation, where we're planting those species back and doing our best to bring, you know, not only the flora but the fauna back. Also, we had an issue with the legless lizard, which is...
It's a snake, isn't it?
...catatopress, and, and what everybody ignores is the fact that it was us that discovered the new species, it was our consultant. And as soon as we discovered this, we gave this information to the government and said, hey, look what we found.
Yeah, and you're given no real thanks for that, are you? I mean, that, that sort of, that great environmental work that you do in your community is just ignored by those that just seek to wage warfare against you, is that...
Well, I mean, that's politics.
I understand that.
Again, you know, I, I really want to go high, and other people can go low.
Yeah, me too, it's always the best way to go.
So rise above it, where's rise above?
I am, I, I'm rising, I'm...
With you, where's, let's rise together.
I, yes, I've risen, Chair, and I'm good.
Very good. I just wondered, Miss Loretson, in the time we have remaining, given the increasing number of mine closures, albeit, you know, obviously you're in a somewhat of a different situation at Mac Energy, given the increasing number that is expected in the coming sort of decade, is the current regulatory framework truly robust enough to handle both the scale and the complexity of future rehabilitation efforts in your view?
I, I think so, because what I've found is these things never happen as fast or as slowly as people say. The, you know, there was a question about the rehabilitation bond calculations. My view of that is, we just fill out the calculator that government gives us.
Yeah.
You know, and they change the rates in it, which, you know, which, you know, increases the amount. So, you know, if we don't think that the RCE is adequate, then fix it.
Can I just ask, do you, what do you, like, you're, you know, you're at the leading edge, cutting edge of this field, do you in earnest think that it's enough, or do you think that it might not be quite hitting the mark at the moment?
I think that the number that we've got for our operation is enough, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know about others.
Right, thank you.
Because the calculator is quite comprehensive, you've got to go through every item of infrastructure for a demolition cost, and we get an independent expert to come and audit it to make sure that it's right, so I think it's right. However, I would also make the point that construction costs always seem to cost more than you expect.
Everything blows out, doesn't it?
Yeah, but, you know, nevertheless, I think it's in the, it's in the ballpark, definitely.
Thank you. In your view, how can the industry, in consultation, obviously with the community and councils and others, balance the need for the traditional rehabilitation obligations with the development of renewable energy projects on post-mining land?
Well, I mean, again, there are obviously opportunities to develop renewable projects on post-mining land, although I note that where the current REZs are, they're not anywhere near any mines. And I think that's pretty well because if you want to set up wind farms, for example, you have to set them up on ridge country, which is typically not, not where we're mining. If I thought of a, you know, if you wanted to, say, put up a wind farm on Mount Pleasant, I don't think that would work. We have looked at solar projects ourselves, and we've looked at solar projects, both for a big one, 50-megawatt scale, or one that's just for the mine's power. And the biggest challenge we found there is you can't get access to the, like, we've got a power line that runs right in front of the mine, but we can't put our solar power into it, because the capacity's already taken up.
Okay, yeah.
By a, by a renewable project that hasn't even started yet. So, you know, there are those sorts of challenges where we could look at renewable projects, but to deliver something that would help the people of New South Wales by putting power into the grid is a, is a separate challenge.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Could add some more comments if you'd like, Chair.
Oh, look, you know, mindful Miss Sue Higginson indicated she had some other questions.
I'm sure she does, I'm sure she does.
I might just, I'll have one more and then I'll pass back to her. In terms of community opinions, how do you think they are currently incorporated into that post-mining land use approval process? Especially where there is a conflict between, you know, the community's desires, what might be economically beneficial, and the proposed rehabilitation plans?
I'm not sure how to answer that. I, I think what I detect in the community is quite a lot of anxiety about the post-mining future.
Yeah.
And particularly in Muswellbrook, there is, I think, some resistance to the idea of that the coal mining industry is just going to vanish in the short term. Now, and in our case, I guess, we obviously don't think it isn't, and not only are we continuing to 2048, but we're also doubling our employment base, so kind of as Mount Arthur goes down and they've got 2,000 employees, our plan is to go from now 400 up to 800, so there's kind of a, we see ourselves as kind of a soft landing for the, for the community.
Okay, interesting.
So in terms of what the community thinks about post-mining, I'm, I'm not sure how to answer that, but I know they're very anxious about their livelihoods and how, you know, how those well-paid mining jobs are going to be replaced by whatever takes its place. And I don't blame them for being anxious about that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Did either of my colleagues have any further questions? Mr. Higginson, the Honourable Westbank?
No, I think I've, I think I've covered all the issues.
I was just curious about, I was just curious about what you see the role in terms of cultural heritage, and the cultural heritage that has, you know, has been lost over time on the site, and what you see the role in terms of that First Nations engagement going forward from here to 2048 and then past 2048 for your operations?
We see this as one of our primary different... We, we see this as one of our primary differentiators as a business with our engagement with, with particularly Indigenous business. We've had a lot of success with, with, with partnerships, particularly with Blackrock. We were the first participant with the Gundy program that takes Aboriginal inmates out of the St Helia's prison. And that's been very successful. We're, we're very proud of how that's worked out. We've got to the, to the immediate west of the mine, we've got a large Aboriginal cultural heritage area that's been dedicated.
A keeping place, you mean?
Yes. No, 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 land, land. So that land has got to be preserved for, for Indigenous groups to practice, to do cultural practice. And we've submitted all the, it's one of our consent requirements to have that. And we've got that to the west. So when you look at Mount Pleasant, we're kind of, you know, we're kind of boxed in. We, you know, we've got Dartbrook to the north, we've got Bengala to the south. To the east, we've got the, the river and the, and the alluvial country. And then to the west, we've got our fines emplacement area and this cultural heritage area. So we are well-defined. We can't expand or go further or, you know, we're, our footprint is pretty well our footprint until 2048, or you could go a little bit past 2048. But I'm thinking about retiring before then. So someone else can do that particular application. So, yeah, the, I mean, to answer, to answer your question without the, without the, the other stuff. Yes, the participation of Indigenous groups we see has been very, very valuable in that process.
And is that, is part of your, I can't remember, but is part of the, will that part of the land be handed in terms of ownership to?
No, it's a covenant.
A covenant, yeah.
It's a covenant that basically forbids any development or any other disturbance on that land. And has, has it available for people to come out? And we, we have used it a little bit. We did a cultural cool burn on it a couple of years ago. And then it hasn't stopped raining since then. So we haven't done any more.
Yeah. And in terms of your, in terms of your final, you've got the, a final void. Have you considered, and are you considering, yeah, are there conceptually any views around the beneficial reuse or end use of that final void? Aside from the idea of a pumped hydro, like in terms of if it is to retain, be retained as a final void? Just two points on it. What is your, the length of equilibrium that you've, the model says that it will be till your project reaches equilibrium? How many years?
It's in the, it's in the EIS. I can't remember the number. It's a long time.
A long time. Yeah, yeah. I think, I think maybe yours is, I can't remember. One of them's 400 years or something. Have you, are, are there conversations happening about what that might look like in terms of?
A hole.
The, beyond the hole full of water? Like, is there any consideration around that?
Okay. So the first point is, we actually did backfill the top half of it.
Yep.
You can't fill it all up because the dirt, you'd have to tear all your rehab up.
Yes.
So, so you, you, you have to have a void. We had a workshop back in 2021 or 2022, I forget when, where we got Newcastle University representatives, all our engineers, a whole, whole swag of consultants in a room. And we came up with ideas, and I thought you might ask me this, so I wrote them down. Pumped hydro.
I've become the final void woman, haven't I? Sorry, yes.
Pumped hydro, floating solar, biomass, intensive agriculture, aquaculture, recreation, land and water-based and water supply and storage. Again, you know, if you, you know, we have got a lot of water licenses. If you brought fresh water into the void, then it doesn't go hypersaline. Then you've got a water storage. Okay, you've got to manage the natural salinity in the coal-measured water. You know, I'm not saying that's, there's no issues. But instead of having a zero-management hypersaline lake, admittedly after hundreds of years, you can have something else. Now, these are all, these are just like thought bubbles, right? I'm not pretending we've done any, but that's where you start. And that's where we start with any project management. You start with concept, then you go order of magnitude, pre-fees, feasibility. If there was a pathway for that, we would be more than happy.
Only to have somebody try and block it in the courts. Must be frustrating.
I think it's the coal mining people trying to block in the courts, not the beneficial reuse, but we won't go there. Yeah. Thank you. That's very helpful.
All right. Good. Thank you.
In terms of your, just a final question from me, apologies. And it's just prompted by listening to some of the discussion that's ensued. Your submission quotes the Resources Regulator guideline, which talks about achieving rehabilitation sign-off. And in particular, that they will only accept a change to the final land use once there is certainty that the proposed land use is achievable and will be implemented. What sort of an impact does that have? And what, if, if there are any changes that you would suggest to that framework, what would they be?
Well, I think, I'd just like to see more consultation and discussion. You know, I mean, that, that's the rules, right? So we, we follow the rules.
Yep.
And we'll continue to follow the rules where, you know, we have to achieve, under our federal approval, we have to achieve 1,000 hectares of white box woodland TEC. So we're going to do that. We have to achieve a natural-looking land form with macro and micro relief. It's out there. And as it grows, we'll continue to develop, to, to develop that land form and get the, get the trees growing on it and re-establish the habitat. We have to achieve, you know, certain criteria for the final void, that it's stable and non-polluting, et cetera. So we'll achieve that. But if, but if, if we can have consultation and exploration of other better alternatives so that we get those biodiversity outcomes, but we also get as, a landscape asset that can be used for the benefit of the community in the long term, then we'll be happy. You know, Mack is a, is quite a diversified company. We're not just a coal mining company. We have interests, the parent company has interests in agribusiness. So our buffer land is not just land to keep people away from the mine. It's actually high-productivity agricultural land. We've got a lot of Hunter River frontage. We've got partnerships with the original owners of that land to lease it back. So, you know, there's, there's still a lot of value out there in terms of just the agribusiness side of, of our holdings.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
My committee members have any other?
No, I've covered off everything, I think. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Lauritsen, for making the time to give evidence to the inquiry today. We really appreciate it. For questions that were taken on notice, our committee secretariat will be in touch with those just to confirm the details. We'll have, I think it's the standard 21 days to respond. Thank you very much again.
Good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll now have a, oh no, we've finished. Sorry, we've finished the hearing for today now. Thank you.